Good evening, everybody. It's 7:05 PM and I'd like to call a special meeting of the National Board of Education to order. It's Monday, July 29, 2019, and, excuse me, it's 6:05, not 7:05. It's a new time for me, so I'm all confused. We're in the Nashville High School North boardroom. Mr. Gorino, if you could call the roll.
Okay, Ms. Oden.
Here.
Ms. Raymond.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mr. Mosher.
I'm here.
Mr. Mosher is joining us by phone. Are you by yourself tonight, Mr. Mosher?
I am.
Thank you. Ms. Van Twyver.
Yeah, I'm here.
Mr. Gorino is here. Ms. Hoensie.
Here.
Ms. Timmons.
Here.
Ms. Porter.
Here.
Also with us is Ms. Ogara.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, that's it. Great, thank you so much, Mr. Gorino. Ms. Van Twyver, did you have something to share with the group?
Yeah, I do, but I'll get to it later.
Okay, then, it's difficult to hear when we have side conversations. No, that's perfectly all right. I just didn't want, know if you wanted something for me or if it was something over there. Okay, on our agenda this evening, we have a few items from HR and a few items regarding the strategic plan. So I will start off with the personnel recommendations. Ms. Timmons, did you have something for us?
Oh, yes, thank you, Ms. Raymond. I'd like to pull this agenda out of order. I'd like to do administrative recommendation first and call Mr. Adamakis.
Adamakis. Okay, is there any objection?
Adamakis, okay.
Any objection to having Mr. Adamakis first, since he is here, instead of making him wait through the personnel recommendations? Seeing no objection, Mr. Mosher, do you have an objection?
No.
Fantastic, welcome, Mr. Adamakis. Am I saying that right?
Adamakis.
Adamakis.
Yes, thank you, thank you for having me.
I will get it, all right.
Mr. Adamakis, did I pronounce that right?
Excellent, excellent.
Good, great. Why don't you tell the board a little bit about yourself, especially me, since it's the first time I'm seeing you and knowing anything about you?
Very good. Well, first, I'm a Nashville native. I was born and raised in Nashville a long time ago, have attended Nashville schools, this is the city of my birth, my formative years, my early education, and I was fortunate enough to also come back to Nashville as a graduate and teach at Elm Street for 10 years. Currently, I am a principal in Pelham. I've been, I've been in that town for 13-plus years, six as an assistant principal, eight, the last eight as principal of Pelham Elementary. And it's an exciting opportunity to get to come back to Nashville, the city that, that I grew up in and that I love, to offer more and be part of that community again.
Do we have any questions?
Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. I'm curious about the types of data you like to use, what you rely on and how you use it.
In, well, in current experience, we rely on a, a number of things. Our current district that I'm in, we focus on, we use iReady data and our teachers utilize that and they progress monitor and do a final assessment every, three times a year. And then those teams use that data to assess and monitor where are those students at, to help personalize that instruction and to help move those students forward. They're constantly using data. And the current building I'm in has a building data team where we not only look at those iReady results, but we also look at the New Hampshire SAS results and we do a look at our math fluencies. And as a team, we have grade level representatives from each team and we look at where are those strengths, where are those challenges, to help meet those students where they're at to move them forward, especially those with the challenge area. We also look at special education assessments. We have a student assessment, student assistance team and what we do is we bring recommendations and suggestions from the grade levels. And as a team, we have our administrators, our nurse, our school psychologist, our behavior specialist and related services, OT, speech, and to really look at students that might be struggling, given that six to eight week intervention period. Were those interventions working or not? We may make recommendations to, for further interventions within that classroom or we may make that recommendation for a special education referral, but we utilize all that information, whether it's formative assessments, the summatives that the teachers give, as well as the diagnostics and the district assessments that we use.
Thank you. One other question, if I may?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm curious, I've, we, we sometimes talk about, well, we oftentimes talk about tier one, tier two, tier three. I don't know if that's a common...
Absolutely.
So, what, I'm of the thought, where I'd like to have this idea explored, and I've spoken to some teachers about it in the past, is where there is, we deal with competencies, but at the same time, does that competency establish they're ready for the next grade? So in other words, if they're maybe a month or two away from the reading proficiency where they're comfortable, you know, what is your thought on that? Can you have a grade five and a half? We don't, so we go to middle school, six, seven and eight. So can you have a grade five and a half to give those students, they just need a little more time, they're really close, they're right on the edge, but, you know, they're maybe not ready for prime time, if I can just say it that way? So what about a thought of that? Because you can't hold, we don't hold students back and we don't require any kind of, I'll call it a proficiency test, to say you're ready for the next grade, although I think we should have that discussion, but I'm, I'm just curious of your thoughts on that.
Well, interesting, that's what we've been vetting in my current district, is looking at, some kids need that extra time and personalized learning has been a big push where I've been working at, getting to know the kids, how they learn. Some students might be able to write that answer, others can't, others might need to verbalize it. And that's what the SAT, SAT team in my current district has currently done, is looking at what other interventions can we put in place, looking at students that might benefit from, they might not be ready for, say, third grade in math, but they're ready in reading, so looking at options. So that's something that I would like to explore and that would require speaking to the, those in the trenches, because the teachers are that first line of defense for the class, what's going on in the classroom, discipline, as well as academic learning, so, but that's not out of the realm of, of looking at moving forward with a suggestion such as that.
Well, thanks. I'm glad to see I'm not completely in left field.
No, no, that's the way education is going now. It's not just stand and deliver anymore. Now it's trying to find where, where are students currently and finding the things that will help them move forward individually. It's not just a, a one curriculum, they're not cookie cutters.
Right, well, thank you for coming and I look forward to having you in the district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Oden.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of sitting in on the interviews for Ms. Timmons. I just have one question. We have had a few openings for principals over the last two or three years, some Title I schools, some not. What was it about this school or this time that brought you back to apply in Nashville rather than to stay where you are?
Well, that's a good question. I've, for years, we've always asked our teachers, don't be afraid to try something new and, and jump in that pool, don't be a, be a swimmer, not a lifeguard, don't sit on the outside watching. And I, I would view myself as somewhat of a hypocrite if I didn't try something new. And when I heard that Amherst Street was open, I just reflected that I spent hours outside of Holman Stadium, playing on those basketball courts. I'm looking forward to an Italian sub from Ginots, they always had the best sandwich in town, I thought. And we would head over to Ginots after playing. I remember our coach, Norm Burgess, rest in peace, Norm, he had us practicing outside of Holman Stadium for football and it was just, a lot of memories came flooding back. I lost my mom two years ago, she was a teacher in Nashville and finding some solace in Woodlawn Cemetery as I visited her, I said, you know what, I think she'd be proud that I would require, make a move back to Nashville. There's a lot of good friends and former colleagues at Nashville South, North, Elm Street that also solidified that decision, it's, it would be nice to come back.
Well, thank you. I spent 15 years there and I think you're headed to a real good place, a real welcoming and hardworking community. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Hoensie.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. I see you've done a lot of work on civics. I'm wondering how you feel, whether the curriculum allows enough time for civics with all the pressures of the testing and also what you're feeling on recess? Do kids get enough of it? Is the theory that if they got more recess, they could focus better? Because some states are, are coming to that conclusion, giving more recess and finding the kids' discipline issues settle down and their focus is stronger. Just want to know what you thought about.
As far as regards to civics, we could always use more embedded in that curriculum. As to how, I'd have to take a look at the schedule at Amherst Street and determine where can that fit in. And again, you know, the, the ELA piece and the mathematics is very important, but I'm a social studies guy, I'd love to see more, more of that embedded within the US history, the settling of the nation, but as well as civics and rights and freedoms of citizens. So I'd love to see more of that. And I know that teachers also have their strengths, you know, there's those that have that stronger reading background and stronger math background. So I'd like to, in working with the curriculum coordinator and, and director, how can we embed more of that within the curriculum, especially at the elementary level? In regards to recess, currently, I'm used to a schedule where students have 50 minutes for both lunch and recess, so they have 25 minutes a day. And we've tried to flip-flop, you know, is recess better before, recess better after? And we listen to our teachers and we, we formulate a schedule based on what, what they're seeing in the classroom after recess, because typically, the discipline issues are on the rise on those unstructured times, lunch and recess. We don't see as many behavioral issues within the classroom, teachers are doing a good job managing that. It's just those unstructured times when they're, when they have that time to socialize, sometimes they get a little, little handsy and it gets, it crosses the line, so. But I do believe they need that recess as an outlet to get that energy out so they can focus. And that's something to listen regarding that, what the staff has to say at Amherst Street and looking at the schedule, when do they have recess, do they need more? And that's a conversation that's worth having.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Gorino.
Thank you, Madam President. My, I have always taken the approach to education that we're, the sound mind and the sound body, the classical type of approach to education. And I guess this kind of is, is, is on the same veins as what Ms. Hoensie said about getting our kids moving. Amherst Street is positioned near the neighborhoods and there's something called safe routes to school. And I was just wondering what your thoughts were on how we encourage safe routes to school, bicycling and walking. There's, there's a lot of obstacles, there's stranger danger, there's traffic danger, but Amherst Street is a great, in a great position near the neighborhoods. And I was just wondering what your thoughts were on how maybe we could encourage more walking and bicycling to school, because it, it kind of piggybacks on recess and it gets kids moving. And, and studies show that kids that walk and bicycle to school and have more exercise, it improves cognitive thinking and cognitive process.
I guess I'd have to also reach out and speak with or meet with and hear from parents in that neighborhood as well, because I, I have a concern about putting six-year-olds on a bike and, or just walking freely to school. So we'd need that parental involvement to help guide those younger students or possibly once, and again, speaking with the staff, maybe creating a buddy system, have some of those older students helping those younger students get to school. But if there's a way we can get students biking and walking, I would like to vet that. That's a, that's a nicety. Being in a neighborhood school, that's not something I have currently. So it would be nice to consider that and, and get those kids moving. Currently, we do hoops for hearts and heart-healthy kids and jump rope marathons to, one, raise money for the American Heart Association, but also to, to get kids moving and reinforce that. And our current PTA in, in Pelham also does a fun fitness day where obstacle courses are set up and parental involvement and volunteers help coordinate some of those events and have students run through those, run through those obstacle courses and participate in, in relays around the track. And it's, it's, it's a really nice event and encourages the fitness, but it also raises money for a good cause. So there are, that's definitely another conversation worth having, how can we get those kids moving?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mosher, did you have any questions for Mr. Adamakis?
No, but I, in comments, you know, I'm a social studies guy and a civics guy myself, having spent time in the state legislature and, and so many other areas. But the, the idea of getting the kids moving is very important because we have a problem with obesity. And that's one of the things to get the kids to do and to enjoy, is the physical activity that could reduce the incidence of that obesity and, you know, get it so that the, the families know that by taking off a few calories from the, from the diet and increasing the, the operation of the body to promote the blood flow into the brain and, and makes for better cognitive results and, when you have better cognitive results, then you have better grades too. And also the fresh air certainly doesn't help, doesn't hurt rather. So yeah, I'm, I'm all for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Thank you, Mr. Adamakis, for coming out on an evening to spend some time with us, I appreciate that. And welcome to the Nashville School District.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to come speak with you folks as well.
All right.
I'm looking forward to coming back.
Great. Ms. Timmons, did you have anything else for Mr. Adamakis?
No, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
All right, have a wonderful rest of your evening. Yes, Mr. Kaufman?
Do we need a motion to accept this particular nomination?
I believe we do.
Move to accept and hire Mr. Adamakis at an annual salary of $100,600.
No, it's $104,000.
I'm sorry, $104,600.
Back in it.
Great. Okay, Mr. Gorino, would you please call the roll?
On the motion, Ms. Oden.
Yes.
Ms. Raymond.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Mosher.
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver.
Yes.
Mr. Gorino votes yes. Ms. Hoensie.
Yes.
Ms. Timmons.
Yes.
Ms. Porter.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Wonderful, welcome. It's official.
It's official.
Okay, great. The next item then would be the personnel recommendations. Ms. Timmons.
Yes, I'd like to turn this over to Ms. Ogara.
Okay.
Anything that you'd like to discuss on, on the personnel recommendation?
I would like to explain the correction on number one. At the last HR meeting, that person went through as a 2019-20 school year, which was a typo, misprint, whatever you want to call it. He is in that, has been in that position this year. And the paperwork came late, the second semester, because that's when the bulk of that kind of work is done. And so we're just correcting it so that we can give him a stipend.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So this stipend would be for last semester?
The last, it actually...
Last year.
It actually starts off slow, like they start in the fall, doing some things, and then it kicks up in the second semester, but it's for the...
This is basically for work that he's already done, that we haven't compensated him for at this point.
Right.
Do we also, is he also planning to come back next year?
Well, we'll, we'll hear from the school and from him then. We do one year at a time.
Okay, gotcha. All right, Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. How do we pay for him now that we're in the next fiscal year? Because that should have been money out of last year's budget, which doesn't exist anymore.
Yeah, it was budgeted for though.
But that budget ended.
So I know Mr. Donovan isn't here, so I'm not like the financial, sorry.
Okay.
Ms. Oden, do you recall from the last finance meeting, was the 2019, 2018-2019 fiscal year closed officially? Or has that, are we waiting till the August meeting to do that?
We had like $140,000 unencumbered.
Yep.
And we were going to have to spend some money from that for the tennis courts. So I don't know.
Yep.
What happened to the rest, whether it was dispersed or not.
Okay.
I, I have no idea.
Okay. It seems to me that we owe this person the money though, right? So we have to do something.
Absolutely, want to pay him, make good on every commitment, I'm, I'm just budgetary, the, the year is over, so that money really doesn't exist to us, unless the bill is in process, as I understand. So maybe that's it, it's still in process, it hasn't been paid, it's legitimate.
That would be my guess, is that this is like a outstanding invoice, is how I would hope Dan treats it?
Exactly.
But perhaps we could make a note to have you speak to Mr. Donovan when he gets back?
Sure.
Thank you. Ms. Oden.
So we approved him for, for 1920 as play director.
Right, and we should...
Is he going to fulfill that? Is that still an open position for a stipend for somebody or is he going to continue as play director?
I don't know whether the school will move him forward as a play director and I don't know if he still wants to be the play director. I think he does, but the school and it's, those are two factors in whether or not. And we usually do one year at a time. And I do think that Mr. Donovan, I, he has to, I think he has to take the 26 paid teachers and put the money back, because you know, they spread out the pay. I think he has to put that back in the year, so I don't think the budget is, I think it, it's still open.
Right, I, I don't believe it's closed yet, but I'm not sure.
Excuse me, can I just, I have one more...
I'm so sorry, Ms. Oden.
No, that's okay.
Please go ahead.
Do we have to rescind what we did at the last meeting?
Yes, I think you're right, Ms. Oden.
Okay. Can, on a procedural matter, can we rescind only this one person or do we have to rescind the entire personnel recommendations and then re-approve them, accept this one?
I, I think we can only, I think we can rescind this.
This one item, line item?
One item.
Mr. Kaufman?
I think we'd have to identify the person, to be clear, to refer to him as number one on the list, I think would be.
We never really mentioned him.
I know, but if you're rescinding, I think we...
Because I don't recall what number he was on the list last time.
Unless you do it at the next HR meeting and include it as part of a list and rescind it that way.
The man is, the gentleman has already put in a lot of work and it would be great if we could pay him for all the work he did over this past year.
I don't think that that's in question at all. I think the question is simply, how do we word motions appropriately to make sure that we are paying him the money that we owe, but that if he hasn't made a commitment, if there's no commitment to him for 2019-20-20, that he's not like stuck in that or we don't accidentally disperse it because the motion's already been made? Ms. Oden.
I don't think we need a name. I think all we need to say is the position of play director.
That seems reasonable. So would someone like to make that motion? Ms. Oden?
We have a motion on the floor.
Oh, what was our motion?
To accept the list, right?
I, I don't believe we made that motion. I believe Ms. Timmons simply asked Ms. Ogara to clarify the list first.
Oh, okay.
So we don't have a motion to approve yet. So I believe what we would need is a motion to rescind the approval of the play director at Nashville High School North for the 2019-20-20 school year.
So moved.
Mm-hmm, okay.
A second?
Second.
Okay, I'll put Mr...
We just need to vote on it.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Okay. And so that then would open up that position. Okay. All right, so let's vote on that then.
On the motion to rescind the 2019-20-20 play director, Ms. Oden.
Yes.
Ms. Raymond.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Mosher.
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver.
Yes.
Mr. Gorino votes yes. Ms. Hoensie.
Yes.
Ms. Timmons.
Yes.
Ms. Porter.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay, thank you. So now, Ms. Timmons.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the personnel recommendation dated July 29, 2019. Second.
There's no further discussion? When you get a moment?
Okay. On the motion to accept the personnel recommendations, July 29, 2019, Ms. Oden.
Yes.
Ms. Raymond.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Mosher.
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver.
Yes.
Mr. Gorino votes yes. Ms. Hoensie.
Yes.
Ms. Timmons.
Yes.
Ms. Porter.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then, Ms. Timmons, we have the non-affiliated handbook.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the non-affiliated handbook, the 2019-20-20 non-affiliated handbook.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Mo, I'll put Mr. Mosher.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Any discussion? I wasn't sure which one was first, so I'll go with Ms. Hoensie.
Thank you. On page four, I just want to know from the superintendent, it says, "All disciplinary actions shall be placed in the employee's personnel file." Is that something that you're in the habit of doing or you have no problem doing in the future? I just want to know, is that current practice? Okay, on page four, on the unaffiliated handbook...
I don't have that in front of me.
Well, I'll read it to you. Under disci...
I don't, just, can you just give me, you asked me a question, I just need to be prepared to respond to it. I don't know where you're reading this from, I don't know...
Page four. I'll give you my copy if you'd like. Can you pass it now?
Madam Chair, can I just finish my response without being interrupted?
Please do. Please do.
I would be more than happy to entertain the question. I just need to get the materials that Ms. Hoensie is referring to around placing information in the discipline folder. I don't know where, the context you're referring to, and so allow me a minute or two to grab that document that you're referring to and I'll be happy to answer your question the best way I can.
Dr. Mosley, please let us know when you have completed your refreshing of your recollection.
Sure, so I'm reading personnel information, is that correct? Around discipline, is that what's being referred to?
Page four, under the category of discipline, first paragraph, last sentence.
It's in, it's in red in mine.
Yes, it's in red.
And so the question was, is that something that is already occurring, something that will be new going forward? And secondly, is it consistent?
Or is it something he'll have a problem with? I just...
Oh, okay, sorry. I didn't mean to.
That's all right.
Miss worded.
I don't have a problem following the practices in the handbook and also what is contractually obligated with the teacher contract and the association and the union and the administration. So I will also say that, that if there is missing information in previous administrations, I can't be responsible for that. So, you know, we do the best we can, given the personnel folders that I inherited.
That, that's fine, I, I wouldn't assume you would be. I'm just saying, is it current practice for you, up to this point in the years that
I'm just saying, is it current practice for you, up to this point in the years that you've been here, to put all disciplinary actions in the file?
Discipline actions that warrant that, that is correct.
Okay, excuse me, where does it say, that should warrant? It says, "All disciplinary actions shall be placed in the employee's personnel file." I know sometimes we have verbal, sometimes people talk to employees. I'm just saying.
If it rises to the level of a written reprimand, then it is in the folder.
It says all, it doesn't say written. That's why I'm confused. I just want clarity on this. I want to know if this is going to actually change anything, or if it's just moot.
I think it's, I'm going to respond, I think it's moot. But I take your point, it really ought to say all written. Because you can't put a verbal, you can't put a verbal warning in a file, unless you document that you gave them a verbal warning. I don't know.
I think every circumstances has a different reaction. There are circumstances where we've had teachers who have had a coaching documentation in their folder. We've had situation where we've had verbal warnings or reprimands. And they sometimes, they have made it in the folder, and sometimes they have not. That's not under my jurisdiction. Sometimes, all written reprimands are in the employee's folder that I have been here. But, you know, if you want to redefine what a verbal reprimand and putting it in the folder, then it's not really a verbal reprimand, it's a written reprimand in the folder.
Yeah, but I think that's what the thing, I think that's what that line means. Ms. Timmons?
I'm sorry, Ms. Ogara has something to say, would you?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed your hand, Ms. Ogara.
No, it's okay.
Say it.
We'll just put you right here on the spot.
All disciplinary action is, so the principals, discipline staff at the schools. The discipline, when it's signed and received, it comes into central office and it's put in the personnel folder. This is not a new practice. I believe when we were first reviewing this handbook way back in two thousand sixteen, Mr. Kaufman asked for, cause most of the edits in the handbook came from you, Mr. Kaufman. And he wanted it in there. It wasn't going back to two thousand sixteen because he felt that the handbook should say what we were doing. That is my recollection of this situation. Progressive discipline starts with a verbal warning, and unless you have it in writing, it doesn't exist.
Okay.
And so typically, if I could, cut.
No, please, Dr. Mosley.
So if we have an employee, you know, and the practice has been that there is a documentation of that verbal warning. So if a person is struggling and you give them that verbal warning, then that conversation is memorialized. And then if there is further discipline, that is also added to the folder as well. You know, I would agree with Ms. Ogara that, that discipline is progressive. There are certain things that rise to the level of immediate reprimand, and we certainly do that. There has been issues with personnel folders prior to my arrival that have inconsistencies there, they just do. There's nothing that I can do to, you know, rectify the past. But certainly, we want to make sure that we're responding to teachers in a responsible way, understanding that we're human beings here. And we sometimes make poor decisions and poor mistakes. And certainly, we allow that conversation to have, to have with our employees. But also, we make sure that we memorialize those discipline procedures when it's appropriate.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. I see your hand, Mr. Kaufman. I just want to make sure that Ms. Hohensie has an opportunity to complete her questions.
Thank you. I think for clarity, it would help me if it say, "All disciplinary actions two, three, and four shall be placed," or other than, you know, somehow make it clear. I'm not trying to cast judgment on anybody. I'm just trying to figure out going forward, what is expected to be done. Cause it says, "All disciplinary action, a verbal warning is an action." Cause you're taking action, you're talking to the employee. So if, I would be delighted if we clarified what the expectation was, so there's no confusion going forward, that's all.
Understood.
So, thank you, Ms. Hohensie. Procedurally, if the board voted to make this change, would that then require another meeting with the non-affiliated group to approve it? I'm, I'm not sure how this works without the union rep.
You're not.
I know, so is it just us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Always just.
Right, but you know, like with the union, if we make a change, then we have to go back to the union and they have to, not approve the change, but we have to agree on the change, and then it comes back. So I just want to make sure that we're not.
So, I'm not sure I understand what you're changing. The process is that verbal warnings are written. There can be, there's a difference between supervisory discussions. You know, I saw you this, and I want to have a little chat with you.
Okay.
So supervisory discussions happen first. But say I saw you do that same thing again, so it would be a verbal warning. Right now, it's written and it's put in the personnel file. Why do you want to change that, may I ask?
I don't. We don't want to change.
No, I wasn't clear that that's what was.
Based on what you're saying, that adds clarity. So you're saying a verbal warning should be in the file. And my understanding from the superintendent is a verbal warning should not be in the file. My only point is to make sure this is clear, so we don't have that ambiguity.
That's not what I said.
So I think.
Well, then I misunderstood.
Well, I think Dr. Mosley indicated that he would follow the handbook. So, and I think both.
What is the handbook? All things one to four?
Yep, and I think both he and Ms. Ogara made the distinction between a conversation and a coaching versus a warning. Does that make sense?
Okay.
And I think that's a reasonable distinction.
Okay, and that distinction I can understand clearly. So that's very helpful.
Okay. Did you have another question? Or can we move to Mr. Kaufman? Okay, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I did want to point out, this has nothing to do with a union contract. This is for the unaffiliated employees. They are not affiliated with a union. So the principal in, I don't know how many unaffiliated people we might have in a, in a school. I think of unaffiliated as people attached to the administrative function of the district. They're not teachers, there's not paras, they're not secretaries, they're not custodians. All those folks are covered under CBAs. So I appreciate, cause the way I read this, there are four things listed. And then the statement is that all disciplinary actions, and I take it to mean the four things that are listed in that paragraph.
Yes.
Okay, can I continue with something else? Okay, thank you.
Yes, please.
So I'll be voting against this primarily for the way leave is constructed in this particular document. On page seven, if you're a ten-year employee, you get twenty days, and you can carry over forty days per year. On page eight, these employees get fifteen days. On page nine, they get eleven holidays. And on page nine again, they get personal days of four. So that's fifty, five zero days per year. They are entitled to take the day off with pay. I find that unsustainable to the district. And I will not approve this with this, with these provisions. And I do make a motion to limit the carryover to ten days per year from the current forty.
Second. I have a question. We, there's a motion on the floor, ready to vote on the handbook. Are we changing that motion?
Move to amend, move to amend the proposal to change.
Wait one second, I wanted Ms. Timmons to finish her thought, and then I will recognize you. So you were saying, Ms. Timmons?
There is a motion on the floor to approve the non-affiliated handbook, and it was second. There was no extension in this. I can't, I will not approve a extension on the not, this particular handbook at all. The handbook was nominated to approve, as is.
Okay.
And I'm not, any other motion to change that, I will not go along with.
Okay. So Ms. Timmons is correct, there is a motion on the floor. I apologize that I forgot there was a motion on the floor. So, Mr. Kaufman, you wanted to rephrase?
Yes, so move to amend the motion to add a change of the carryover period from forty days per year to ten days per year.
And I seconded that. What page would that be on?
On page seven.
Thank you.
Oh, page eight.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Page eight?
Employees may accumulate and carry over up to forty.
The top of page eight, thank you.
Do we have any discussion regarding that amendment? I have a question, if no one else does. My question is, what has been, cause this is not in red. So it seems to me that this existed prior to, like it was approved back in two thousand and seventeen, or no?
Vacation time has been carryover for forty days since before I started in two thousand and seven. And vacation time is paid out when people leave. It's in the principals' contract, because the principals and the directors' contract as well, for forty days, because those two groups were in the non-affiliated. This is a long-established past practice. We have people who you would have to pay them out then, because you're taking, if they had forty days, and a lot of people do have forty days, because they can't take all that, they can't take vacation because they're so busy. And so you, it's a payable thing, so now we would have to spend that money to pay those people out for that vacation.
Okay, and the payout is a hundred percent of the forty days?
It's a hundred percent of what their.
Whatever, up to forty days.
What their rate is, yeah.
Okay, hold on.
May I speak to my motion?
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. So the reason for the proposal is to try and get in line with taxpayer world, where employers now generally, maybe you can carry a week, even two weeks. The practice generally, and say where my girlfriend works, is you either take your vacation, or whatever sick days, whatever the days you have that year, you either use them in that fiscal calendar year, whatever how they operate, or you lose them. So the, the real world, the non-academic world, is use them or lose them. This is very, and a very expensive liability to the district. And I agree, they've earned them based on past practice, and if we have to buy them out, so be it. But going forward, you can only carry ten days, that's my proposal, is you carry ten days going forward. I'm not trying to deny people that which we've previously agreed to. But I would say that going forward, you can only carry over ten. But I think we need to be cognizant of the situation, the taxpayers who pay for all this, and what their situation is in their lives, where you either lose it, use it, or lose it. And besides, the way this is structured, one of these employees who've been around for ten years or more can take one day off a week between the vacations, the sick, the holidays, and everything else, and they have a four-day work week. And I don't think that benefits the district, I don't think it benefits our students, I don't think it benefits the execution of the administration where these people largely work, which is my understanding. So that's the purpose, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman, so are you, just to clarify your motion to amend, so you're saying that you move to amend from forty carryovers to ten carryover days for new hires?
No, no.
Because you were saying you don't want to take away from the people who are here, who have already, have that carried over?
To answer that, if I may, well, you could grandfather, to that extent.
Wouldn't that be for new hires then, if you grandfathered it?
You could do it that way. But if someone's at twenty hours, I would just as soon stop it now, so they don't accrue, you can keep your twenty if that's what you've got. But you can't accrue any more than ten, new, or if you're short of forty. So if you're at twenty, you've got your twenty.
How does one word that in a way that is easily digestible? Ms. Hohensie?
Well, I was taking it that if you've, this is what you've taken carryover from, to add to what you've got accrued. If you've got accrued five, or ten, or fifteen, then you can add to it. But in the future, you can only add.
Ten.
Ten.
So there would need to be a start date? So starting with this contract, or starting on the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'm going to write that down so that I have it. Mr., wait, Dr. Mosley had his hand up. I see Mr. Greeno and I see Ms. Timmons.
Just clarification, I, the people on, that we're talking about now making reductions in their carryover for vacation time are the people that, what I'd say are invaluable to this district. And what you're really talking about is a person like Dan Donovan? Dana Ogara? Like, really? They don't take four days off and cash in. These are people who are here at the board meetings, night in and night out, here. And after the board meetings, they're here at seven o'clock running this district. And so they don't ask for much, and they're not going to come here and say, "You're making a mistake," or anything. But I caution the board that to make this unilateral recommendation after having no data, just looking at the numbers is a, a short-sighted to not treating employees that put in and go above and beyond the call of duty and not really understanding what they're doing when you make a proposal like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Timmons and then Mr. Greeno.
Okay, I won't vote on that. I just want you to know that right, like this minute. But on page fourteen, the annual review of personnel policies, you should read that before we vote on any changes to this, one that we already vetted a few times already, the non-affiliated handbook. You will understand that suggestion that Mr. Kaufman made does not make sense. It's not reasonable. So I will not be supporting it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Timmons. Mr. Greeno, and then back to Ms. Hohensie?
I'll pass.
Oh, okay.
I'll have a comment too.
Okay, I'd like to do Ms. Hohensie and then you, Mr. Mosher.
Okay.
Just the next paragraph down for sick leave, what I guess the public may not understand, they're talking about full-time school year employees and technical management positions where they have a hundred and sixty-five, a hundred and forty, and a hundred, they, a hundred and eighty-five sick days. They can accumulate sick days. So if they have an issue that's of concern, they're covered. But up top, what we're talking about is vacation days. In the business world, you get maybe two weeks of vacation a year, and you're expected to use it in that year, or maybe a little bit after, but they don't want a growing liability where an employee takes all their vacation and just keeps accruing it. Cause you've got vacation day in addition to up to a hundred and sixty, eighty-five sick days. That's a big liability for the district in terms of payout. So I'm not trying to shortchange anyone, but I, I do think that there is coverage for an emergency if somebody's accruing sick days. So if there's a real need, they don't need to use vacation days, they can use sick days.
Thank you. Mr. Mosher?
Yes, I don't agree with, with Howard's idea. I think that, you know, we have established a practice, and we should stay with it. People will be expecting it, and I think that we're looking at a, a problem down the line, because we have a lot of sharp people out there that are going to pick on us, and you're going to have some, some real problems later on. So I think that it's foolish to start messing around with it. The handbook has already been amended and approved. So I think we should stay with it the way it is, and forget about any of these changes that now all of a sudden, somebody wants to change. No, I'm not going to approve it either.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. I just like to say that it concerns me, this idea that we kind of race to the bottom on these things. We shouldn't be having competitions to see who can provide the least amount of benefits with our business members. We should be having competitions to see what businesses and employers can support their employees the most. I will say as well, in the business world, being somebody who, husband still works full-time, that when you're talking about chief operating officers, the coordinators, the managers of large departments, standard is between four and six weeks a year. Some of my own friends can buy extra than that as well. Like they get three weeks, but you can get an additional two. And I would say that these are rollovers, which means that they're not using the three weeks that we, the two if you're less than twenty years, or three, more than twenty years that we give them. And I just personally, you have to wait, no, ten years, I'm sorry. You have to wait ten years before you get four weeks off? That's surprising to me, cause I don't see that so much in the business world. So I guess my biggest concern though is, we see this with health insurance too. As rates go up, people offer less, and then they're like, "Well, other people offer less, so now we're going to offer less." And at the end of. And at the end of the day, you know, um, the workers, the people who are going to work- Mr. Mosher?
Yeah, what's going on? Nobody.
Okay. Okay. Um, those people are, um, suffering, and I, I don't want to take things away from our employees just because people in the business world. I want this to be an attractive place to work. And part of it is, um, when you work for the school district, or you work for the state, you get paid less, but the offset is typically that you get a little bit better benefits, maybe a better work-life balance for your family. So, um, that's all I have to say on it.
So, are you gonna vote on the motion, or are we gonna vote on-
We have to vote on the amendment first, and then after the amendment, we can vote on the motion. Okay. Any further discussion on this amendment? Seeing none, Mr. Guarino, please call the roll.
On the amendment to change the carryover period of forty days to ten days. Ms. Oden?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
No.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Uh, Mr. Guarino votes no. Ms. Hohency?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Porter?
No.
I have two yeses and seven nos, the motion fails.
Okay. Is there any further discussion regarding the motion to approve the handbook as is? I'm not seeing any hands, so I think we're ready for, um, a vote on that motion.
On the, uh, motion to approve the 2019, 2020 non-affiliated handbook, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohency?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
I have seven yeses, two nos, motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Um, I do have one question about this. The last dates were 2015, 2016, and now it's 2019, 2020. Are we gonna do this again next year? Or are we gonna wait until there needs to be a change?
It's an annual thing.
It should be annual. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Ms. Timmons, did you have anything else under, um, HR matters?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, the next item on our agenda is a public question comment period, limited to items on this agenda. Yes, Ms. Walsh? Yes, please. Is there a sign up?
There is not.
Oh, okay. I'll just wave around and see. Yes. I can roll with it. Linda Walsh, 207 Manchester Street. Am I coming in? Good volume? Okay. Yeah. Um, tonight I wanna speak more as a teacher, although I did work on this committee for the strategic plan, um, but I'm gonna speak mostly from my personal views with the benefit having served on the committee. Um, the first thing I wanna talk about, one of my concerns as a teacher, is not really having a clear direction as a district. I've, this'll be my nineteenth year teaching in Nashua. Um, we have a lot of, um, turnover in administration, and it sometimes seems as a teacher that we're going in circles. And leadership comes and leadership goes, but, um, there's a core group of teachers that stays here and makes things happen. Colleagues often find better opportunities. Um, retention and, um, retaining teachers is difficult, and as well as administrators. Um, and last year it was a big joke, or the last couple of years it was a big joke, because it was like, all the teachers would talk about, like, the sinking of the Titanic and watching all of the lifeboats travel away as one more administrator went to a different district, as another administrator went to a different district, as another teacher went to another district. And for those of us that are still, you know, on the Titanic, um, it, it seems to me that an every-man-for-himself mentality in this district is not the answer to, um, success, and it definitely affects morale in the district. Um, another thing that frustrates me as a teacher is the, um, it's all about the test mentality. Oftentimes, teachers can't do what's right for kids because we are so busy preparing for the test. We lose over a month of instruction to testing. I'm gonna say that again, because there's an, it's eight months of a year we have instruction, and we lose one for testing, for iReady, plus the SAS, and that doesn't count a single teacher test that's given in the classroom. Tests tell us what we know, but tests do not tell us who we are. And ever since No Child Left Behind came out, it seems that we have pushed, um, you know, doing what's right for kids and, and treating it as a whole-child mentality out the window. It's about time we come back to basics. We devote in this district every minute to reading and writing and math, which is great. I'm, I'm a foundationalist myself in academics, um, but we've lost out on science, and we've lost out on social studies, and I heard here tonight, three people mentioned civics. We've lost out on civics at the expense of what No Child Left Behind has mandated us to pay attention to. Um, we've lost out on morning meetings in elementary school and reading picture books that have, um, lessons and, um, about cooperation, apologizing, having manners, getting along with others, um, being kind, accepting others. This has all been pushed out so that we are testing, testing, testing. What we're seeing now is that this kind of shift in mentality, getting away from the whole child, is hurting kids, and we're seeing from colleges that our graduates are not prepared with the, the real-world skills, like you were talking about tonight, or real-life or the business world skills, they're not coming with. And, um, colleges and universities are seeing that as well as employers. So, as part of this plan, I know that there's, Dr. Moser will probably make a presentation tonight, um, a lot of what you're going to hear may sound like it's new, but it's not. It's really back down to basics. Teaching things like self-discipline and goal-setting, organizational skills, empathy, respect for others, communication and teamwork. So, when we hear the word "social-emotional learning," it's an automatic trigger for some of us that don't understand really maybe what it entails, but it's no different than when I was raised in an elementary school classroom, or when my parents read me books at nighttime to go to bed. You're, you're, you're learning at the same time as you're learning also how to live with people and deal with people. Um, it's not something to be wary of. I mean, I break down anything my kids don't understand, and I always break down back to the Greek and Latin. So, if you look at social-emotional, it's two words. It's social, it's getting along with people. It's emotions, we all have them, kids have them, we can't deny that they do. Working with other people brings up lots of emotions, especially in this room, it seems. But being frustrated, or dealing with anger, or dealing with happiness, dealing with, um, you know, um, sadness, or fear, or boredom, those are the kinds of things that kids are dealing with, and teachers are having to respond to that. Those are, you know, how kids deal with their feelings, we can't ignore because it gets in the way of learning in the classroom. So, it's not necessarily, um, you know, these are, SCL is really getting back to teaching the kids the important skills they need for the classroom, um, in the workplace and in the community. It's really people skills, so it's no different than what you grew up with when you, when you heard about social skills. I wanna now shift gears a little bit and talk about how I watch way too many Board of Ed meetings. And, um, you know, I listen to all of your statements, I don't always agree philosophically with all of you, but I always do find something that affects the way I think. And, um, this plan that we worked on for a year does reflect a lot of your feedback, and I wanna put that out there because I think that, um, sometimes we forget about that. I made a list, and I take notes when I watch the Board of Ed meetings, so I'm gonna start with Mr. Mosher. Mr. Mosher is one of the two historians on the Board of Ed, and he always brings apparent perspective to the table. He likes the old-fashioned basics, and I want to talk about how this plan is not getting away from the basics. This plan is, is really, um, going to the whole child is really no more than the basics. It's the academic basics, the social skills, and the physical, um, components, which, you know, Mr. Mosher, you talked about tonight, about physical components, and I want to let you know that that is part of the whole-child mentality. Mrs. Hohency, um, you know, makes a lot of comments, you make a lot of comments about transparency, I wanted to speak to that. I can tell you that personally, as a part of this, um, committee that I kinda pushed my way onto, by the way, um, I read eight thousand comments from focus groups, eight thousand. I read every single one myself with a group of four data girls, and we categorized those all into different, um, themes. Another thing is that, um, the, the plan was not a result of, of one person or three people. It was the result of data over time, and I can, I can vouch for that because I looked at every single piece of data. I'm a one that, if anyone ever wants to survey someone, they call me, 'cause I love a good survey. Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Sorry, can you back the microphone away just a little bit?
How about now?
Is that better?
Is it good?
Yep.
Can you hear me now?
I think so. Jimmy's giving me a look that says-
Jimmy, how's it going, Jimmy? You got me?
That he can hear you better.
Okay.
Okay, good. I just wanna make sure that your comments are, you know, audible to everybody in the audience.
Perfect.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you.
It's not a problem. I'd rather people hear. Um, Mrs. Hohency, you also talk a lot about programming, and I would agree with you. SCL is really not a program. It's more about teaching and modeling, um, good practice for kids about how to get along with others, um, how to be self-disciplined, taking responsibility for your own actions. I do like that you, as a social studies teacher, I like that you ask a lot of critical questions, um, and you're always looking for the sources, you're always vetting the sources, and I think that's really good social studies practice. Um, we looked at a lot of research when we did this. Um, we looked at state, um, recommendations, we looked at federal recommendations, and we didn't take anything that was just off of the Google. So, we did vet, we did vet that. Also, you're really big on data collection. I hate data collection. Like, as a teacher, I, I, I will tell you, I hate state testing, I hate iReady. But SCL really isn't data collection, and I don't know of a teacher in Nashua that really would have the time to collect data. But moving to the whole child gives us that freedom for things like, um, you mentioned tonight, you mentioned physical activity again, and recess, you mentioned again. Um, and I wanna go back to pre-No Child Left Behind, that's what we did as teachers, and I think that if you're new to teaching, you might not know that history. But if you're one of the old ones, like I am, then you remember a time that we had freedom for recess because we, we didn't have the pressures for testing. Mr. Kaufman, um, CTE, that was great input three meetings ago, and, um, it's in the plan in at least two places, if I, if I'm correct about that, and it is on the radar. You asked for an executive summary, I took notes on that. Um, we did take a balance between war and peace and adding an executive summary, so there is an executive summary in there. I think that, um, that's a good start. College and career ready, we haven't lost sight of academics, um, and added some essential skills for college and career based on the feedback of colleges and employers. You're big into citizenship, and tonight I, I noticed that we're not using the word in the same way. There's two components. When I think of citizenship, I'm thinking about respect and responsibility, and I think you're thinking of the social studies aspect of citizenship. Is that correct? Well, I guess I can't ask questions. But I wanted to put on there that citizenship in both ways, both definitions, is important, and I think the plan addresses a little bit of both. Fiscally conservative, I noticed that that's a big, big importance for you. We're asking for a lot of positions, I'm, I'm not gonna lie, there's a lot of positions, but I wanna also note that those are restoration of positions that we've lost over the years. And again, since we've lost so much administrative history, teachers who have been here for twenty years could look back and really notice the, the decline in the amount of positions that we've lost over the years. Technology made it into the plan, you're always, you actually have good input a lot about technology, we took that advice and made sure it's in there. You're a process and a logistics guy, we, um, we tried to, to make the, the process clear in the last, um, presentation. For a lot of the same reasons, Mrs. Van Twyver, you're the other historical ground of the, the board. You're a data girl, and, um, we added a yearly breakdown at your request and added the projected costs. Academic achievement seems very important to you, as I, I take notes, um, and I wanna just assure that the basics are not going away. Reading and writing and arithmetic are still there. We still have to do state testing, it's not an option. Um, it's not going anywhere, but we added the ideas that kids can grow in different ways besides just a test score. Of course, fiscal impact, um, everything we're adding is somewhere we've lost in the past. Mrs. Timmons, you spoke two meetings ago about equity across the schools. I think we worked really hard as a group to make sure we looked at all the schools and tried to add positions where they weren't equitable. You also talk a lot about addressing the needs of all of our kids so that we can learn, and I think whole child is a, a good place to start. If you're not, um, aware of too much of what whole child is, I'm happy to, to fill you in, I think you, we'd be happy with that. Mrs. Raymond, you talk a lot about poverty and supporting kids and, um, teachers. We did add a bunch of support in here for kids and teachers. You seem like a Maslow's girl, a Maslow's high-acute-of-needs girl, so whole child should be up your alley. Attention to detail, I appreciate that. We did a lot of proofreading, and if you find any more mistakes, I swear, we've seen it too much to even notice at this point. Mr. Guarino, um, I noticed tonight you talked a little bit about, um, the, um, physical nature of needing, um, for kids. The whole child takes into perspective the social and the academic and the physical needs, and I'll, you'll notice that if you read the plan, there is some, some things about health curriculum in there. Manchester's been doing an elementary health curriculum for years, and I'm surprised, as a teacher, that Nashua hasn't, um, and that's a big missing link from ours, our, our schools. Mrs. Porter, I don't know what else to say. You worked hard to get this plan done, you'll always be a teacher first. You advocated constantly for teachers during this process. You looked at the, the lens, you looked at the plan through the lens not only of a teacher, but it, it got to the point where you looked through it, um, from a lens of a student, a parent, even a Board of Alderman member. You would always come back and say, "But if I looked at this through the lens of this person, what would they see?" But you also recognize that tests, uh, kids are more than a test scores, and that you have high expectations is a good thing, academically and behaviorally. Creating good citizens seems like it's a priority for you in your comments at board meetings. And last but not least, I'll call you scarecrow, uh, Mrs. Oden. You, you are always looking for on-the-ground positions. You are wary of top-heavy support at the district level, and that's a valid concern. I hope that we address some of that, if you look in the appendices, um, to justify some of the positions. You're always wanting direct support for teachers in the trenches, which is absolutely essential, and restoring what we lost is key. You always are, wanna do what's best for kids. You're always a teacher first, um, and, and this is big. Your, your expectations for behavior and a handbook review and consistent enforcement of a handbook was listened to, and it, it is in the plan. And especially school psychologists, I know that that was really important to you, as well as many teachers, um, and I think we, we heard you loud and clear and, and tried to find a place for that. So, in conclusion, as you listen to the presentation, um, it's a little hard to comment before the presentation, but that's where public comment comes. Not everyone is gonna be happy. No one would be happy, uh, we couldn't make everyone happy with any plan we came forward to. That's just a statistical certainty. The plan does contain a little bit of each person's input on the board, and it is reflective of all the data we collected over a year. This took a long time to put together, it was not thrown together, it was hours and hours and weeks and weeks and weeks and months of work. We cannot continue to go in circles in this district. So, the plan is not perfect, and no plan could ever be perfect, and we're not asking for all that we need, because I, I can speak as a teacher, there's much more than we need than is in this plan. But when we've taken away year after year after year, and we've never stopped to restore, this is the kind of impact it has, is that it, it looks like it's a big restoration. I would encourage you to support the plan and to, you know, make, make your input, it has been listened to along the way. Um, but we need to move in a direction in this district together, and, um, that means we, we have to do it with the board, we have to do it with teachers, administrators, central office, but we need a direction, and it's not doing us any good to sit here and going in circles year after year after year. So, I would really appreciate if someone gave teachers in this, this district a direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. Do we have any other public comments? Mr. Farrington? Oops.
Good evening.
There we go.
I remember I just didn't look. George Farrington, 24 Lutheran Drive. Let me start by saying much of what Mrs. Walsh said earlier, I, uh, I tend to agree with, or I don't necessarily strongly disagree with. But, and I realize that a lot of people have spent a great deal of time working on this project, and part of me feels bad about coming- project, and part of me feels bad about coming here and questioning it. At the same time, I have three grandchildren currently in the district and one who's 11 days old, who is getting ready day by day to join the class here in another five years, I guess. To begin, it isn't clear to me whose views and desires are carrying the day in this plan. There were 36 focus groups. Seventeen of those were for teachers and one for the interior leadership. There were four groups for elementary, middle, and high school parents. There are roughly 1,000 teachers in the district with a, but with a total enrollment of just over 11,000 students, there must be at least 7,000 to 8,000 individual parents. But I don't know how many participated in the focus groups. One group, however, that has come out, one number that has come out was, there were 15 parents at the focus group for Elm Street and Fairgrounds Middle Schools with a combined enrollment of 1,788 students. If I counted correctly, those 15 parents generated 225 statements. As for the survey, 3,522 people participated, but only 651 identified themselves as parents. This causes me concern as to whether or not parents are very well represented in this. And I understand you made an effort, but it has to be an effort from the other side also. Oftentimes, when working on a project like this, people can get emotionally involved, and sometimes the anecdotes tend to overrule the data. A recent example of this occurred at last week's strategic planning work session. The administration was quite emphatic in saying, our parents want this. They want a conversation around social, emotional learning. As part of that same meeting, there was a slide from the strategic planning survey showing the top parent priorities. The top two priorities were preparing students for college or career and school safety. Further, when reviewing the 140 statements from the elementary parent focus group, I only see three that reference social, emotional learning. I haven't seen a breakdown of the focus, focus group attendance, so I don't know how many parents these statements actually represent. The only quantifiable goals I can find in the plan are graduation rates will increase by 2% to 3% per year, a 5% improvement in district-wide communications, a shift in the retention of staff by 70%, a shift in the diversity of educators and administrators increasing 5%. And then there is students having an equitable education experience, which seems to me very subjective, and I don't know how you're going to ever determine that. When I look at strategic goals in other districts, I see things like 80% of incoming kindergarten students enter prepared for kindergarten. 90% of third graders read at grade level by the end of their third grade year. Algebra I and II will become the standard eighth grade math class, and 90% of students in grades three through 10 meet grade-level standards in math. Even the literature for the Choose Love movement talks about expecting academic success. It reported a study that showed SEL instruction demonstrated achievement scores in an average of 11 percentile points higher than students who did not receive SEL instruction. And that's achievement scores, not growth. You don't know how parents and others feel about this because nowhere in the "I strongly agree, disagree" section of the survey was there a statement that said, "I believe it is very important that students be reading or doing math on grade level by the end of third grade." If you really believe in all of this, be bold and set quantifiable goals that we can all see and measure. I obviously don't have the latest data, but there was a history of students having difficulty in failing Algebra I the first time through. There was also a history of students at various post-secondary schools requiring remedial courses in language arts and math. Did the committee ever review either of these situations to determine if they are still the case, and if so, if this should be included in your strategic plan as to how to help these students along? In conclusion, I'd like to comment on just five of the action steps. 1.1, create instructional leadership teams at each school that research and create conditions that contribute to student academic success. Remember, I'm a layperson, so cut me a little slack here, but it sounds like there's a simple solution out there if we can just find it. But I would ask, if there is a solution, don't you think it would be in the news? And isn't it a bad idea to have 12 different teams from the elementary level researching the same thing and possibly going in entirely different directions, depending on the results of their research? 1.8, examine student growth through the lens of the whole child. Develop a matrix to measure student achievement based on student growth over time. Achievement is a point-in-time measure that evaluates how well students perform against the standard. In contrast, progress is measured by how much growth students make over time, typically over a year of school. Both of these measures are important, but they provide different information. As Mr. Marku pointed out recently, a student can show wonderful growth but never demonstrate proficiency. For that particular student, the growth alone can be cause for celebration. But there are 11,000 students. That is why it is a mistake to set a goal that everyone must be reading on grade level by a certain point. The Army had the right idea 30, 40 years ago when they say, be all you can be. And I think that that was a slogan that perhaps a district should consider. 1 dot 10, redesign district-wide assessments to be purposeful, connected, and equitable for all learners. I'm really not even sure what all this means. Is there anyone in the district remotely qualified to do such a thing? If you can ever get to an assessment that is purposeful, connected, and equitable, will the results be meaningful? Will they be recognized by any other educational institution? 2 dot 4, form a district-wide task force to examine and recommend developmentally and culturally appropriate norms for student behavior. Now, when I read that, I have three daughters and two granddaughters, and the very first thing that came to mind was, what about the treatment of women and girls? There are cultures around the world and within this country that treat women much more poorly than is generally accepted by the women I know. Are we going to have multiple acceptable standards of conduct within our schools? How do you tell a student that he is going to be punished for something but his friend is not because of cultural norms? And finally, I couldn't let this one go. 4 point 7, improve and properly structure the governance system between the BOE and school administration. The people responsible for this action step are the superintendent and the BOE president. Now, it seems as I get older, for some reason, I have a greater respect for experience. With all due respect, three years' experience in either role doesn't really seem sufficient to me be making judgments like this. Many of the things that have been grinding people's gears over the last year or so are based on individual personalities. Experience tells me that you can't change people through a policy, and changing policy to address a personality is a bad practice. In five short months, five of the members may be replaced with different personalities. In my 12 years on this board, I spent eight years as president, worked with six different boards and five different superintendents. In the, in the end, they're all people who need to find a comfortable way to work together, and that can vary from year to year. Kind of like in SEL, learning how to deal with people. One other thing that I wanted to just speak to, was mentioned earlier, the decline over the last 10 years. I briefly looked at the information for this evening, and I think it was 61 reduction, but they didn't show the total student population. I believe student population roughly approximated based on the numbers that were presented. The student population has declined by about 1,000 students over that same period of time. So 1,000 student reduction would be about a 9% reduction, and 61% or 61 positions would be roughly a 6% reduction. If you're just looking at teachers, I don't have access to the, all the information. But just as an approximation, the point is, you don't have classrooms to bring that many teachers back. I look at your elementary classes, and I think that one of the things, the fact that you have very good class sizes, or what I would consider very good class sizes in elementary school, particularly in the lower grades, fourth and fifth grade, you have a few class sizes on the 25 and 24, 25, and maybe a 26. But I think you have pretty good class sizes. And I'm not going to ramble on anymore. But I would like to conclude with social, emotional education, restorative justice, professional development on the latest cultural norms, and so on. My last question is, when are our teachers going to teach? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farrington. Do we have anyone else wishing to make a comment this evening? Okay, seeing none. I believe, Dr. Mosley, you have a presentation for us. Do you need the big thing? Okay. If everyone could just bear with us for a moment while we get set up. I'm happy to do a five-minute break. Yep. That sounds good. So let's take a five-minute break to get set up for the presentation, and we will come back at 7:30. Thank you. Okay, so it is 7:34, and we are back in session. I apologize, my five-minute breaks always take like eight or 10 minutes. I just need to say 10 from now on. Dr. Mosley, I believe you have a presentation for us.
I do. I'm ready to go.
Careful, thank you.
No problem. So I'll take over. I just wanted to say hello to the public, hello to the board, and... Are we recording?
Yes.
Are we good? Okay. So I will start by saying that I'm very excited. I'm excited. I wouldn't say I'm nervous, but there's a little bit of bittersweet here because we actually have been working on this for one year. If I can back up and say that part of the attraction and the expectation that the district had of, of myself and my leadership team is to come up with a strategic plan that was from the grassroots up, that incorporated the voices of our teachers, our stakeholders, and our leadership team. And so to embark on such a prodigious endeavor, it required so much collaboration, so much teamwork. And I can't thank the steering committee, the, the leadership team, Tara Gabby, you know, Lisa, Diane, Linda did a wonderful job. I said, it feels like I don't know how to follow that act, so I'm going to try. I, I think she captured a lot of the essence of what's in this plan. I also wanted to thank Sue Porter. It's going to feel weird not seeing her as much, but we managed to see each other in, in market basket, and we continued these discussions on our strategic plan. So, building on that excitement and an understanding where the district is, this is an overview on what the public and the board is going to see regarding our strategic plan. We'll give you an overview. We're going to talk about the introduction. We're going to talk about the data collection. The data collection is not new information coming to the board. You, we've already discussed that with the board. We're going to talk and reiterate the results of the survey. We're also going to talk about some themes that emerged from the focus groups. And we're also going to talk about the NEAS report from the South Climate Survey, which is also in the appendix of this document. And certainly, the creation of the vision, the mission, and the value of our strategic plan, the mission and the vision and the value of our strategic plan have not been visited for quite some time and was in need of def, some revision. You've heard the, the terms, the whole child, the philosophy. I think it's important to understand that when we are making, or making these assertions of the whole child, I think it's fair to say, what is that district, or what is the district definition of that? And I will talk to you about that. Talk about the culture shift, and I will talk about the key components of Goal 1 and 2. And finally, I'll just leave you with this teaser to the public and to the board. Talk a little bit about sailing to success. So part of what, a nice visual, visual of our district as it stands is, I like this one, is where are we? And right now, because we don't have a plan, because we have so many different competing needs, the perception and feeling is that we're on this rock. We're on a rock, we've got, we're on, we are a boat on a rock. And to get off the rock, we need the vision to find the best way to smoothly sail to success. If I may quote JFK, "The effort and courage are not enough without purpose and direction." And what you'll see tonight is that this plan promotes such purpose and direction. So part of what's important to understand is that, that there is changing demographics within our district. Our Asian-American, our population has shifted significantly. We'll see, we see a lot more of our demographics increasing. So for instance, our, our African-American population has stabilized, I would say. Our Asian-American population has increased. Our Latino population or Hispanic population has seen an increase over a 10-year period. So what I am projecting here is a snapshot of the demographic, the demographics of our students in our district. And with that said, you've noticed that 10 years ago, our district was comprised of 14% Latino students. This year, we have 26%. I also want to jump to students who identify as being white. 10 years ago, it was 74%. 10 years later, that's 50% of our students. And if you notice, our students who are ELL, that population has also increased as well. Our free and reduced lunch 10 years ago was at about 32%. Fast forward to 2018, 2019, it's about 43%. Our special education population 10 years ago was at 15%, and now we're at 17% 10 years later. So what I am communicating here is that there has been a shift in our demographics as a district. That shift means that we are becoming much more diverse. We're becoming much more, I use this word, browning, not to say one color, but you certainly see a multitude, multiracial families now who identify as such, comprising of our student population. So this is a demographic of our, a slide of our district employees in terms of personnel. As you can see, from 2010 to 2015, our, our staffing has been reduced by 61 employees here. Now, I heard some arguments around, you know, the student population has decreased. That is true, but the needs of our kids have increased. The support, our, our faculty need has increased. The expectations because of no child left behind, because of this data point for kids has increased. And so what you have is, you have this, this monster of expectations, these expectations that are beyond what the fact, what's, what this district is staffed for. And part of that is that we've lost so many positions as a result of, of budgets, as a result of being underfunded. And this plan is advocates for those positions and to, to be supportive of our students and our faculty. So there is also something, the elephant in the room, that I think is very important. And this has to, this speaks to the ship on the rocks. And you notice, within the last 10 years, there's been close to four different superintendents. That has a lot to do with the, the direction, the consistency, and the support that is available in this district. And with that said, as, as Linda Walsh alluded to earlier, there is no direction. There was this sense of who's in charge, who's going to be around in the next one or two years, what is the plan? And there's been chaos at the higher level with the administration and with the board. And we have to acknowledge that. And what this plan is advocating for is to cease that, to promote direction since stability, to move forward, not just as one person, not as just a superintendent solely, not as just the board solely, but together as a district. If you look over to the assistant superintendent positions over the last 10 years plus, it's incredible. So this slide gives you a snapshot as to why, why there's been so, why there's been instability within this district because of the changing personnel that has occurred over the last 10 years. It's amazing. But part of my opening line for when I, when I, when I give my presentation to the teachers is like, I think I'm the longest-tenured superintendent in the last three years because I'm still here. So if you factor in losing 61 positions, you factor in these changes in top leadership positions over the 10 years, you do have a feeling. And you do have a district that is in need of direction. And that's what the strategic plan promotes. Part of this process of strategic planning first started out as a listening tour, followed by engaging with community members. And we went to every single school and listened. We invited, we invited ourselves and made a forum to all of our parent groups and listened. We even went to the local churches and did our SWOT analysis and listened. Sue and I, on a cold Saturday, packed up our bags, went down to the public library, opened it up to anyone, anyone. We've, we've actually fed anyone who walked through the door, even though some of them didn't participate in the SWOT. But we were there to listen. And that listening allowed us to engage our community. That listening allowed us to think about gathering data from different data points. But more importantly, that listening tour that we did really showed that we were collaborating and really let our public know that this is a collaboration that was going to have some compromise. We also spent some time, and I'll get to this later, about processing prioritization in response to our feedback, and I will get to that. In research, one of the things that you always want to make sure, and when you have a degree and you write a dissertation, you never look at one data source. And the process is called triangulation of the data. And typically, when you use the word triangulate, you're thinking about a triangle. And really what you do is that you're promoting different and variety of data sets to come up with a theory or a thesis to write about. But it also gives you feedback and idea of what you're looking at and some of the challenges or factors that come up during your, your analysis. And so with that said, we had one data source of our New Hampshire Climate Survey. We had stakeholders identification in terms of our focus groups. Excuse me, in terms of our leadership group and our steering committees as well, our focus groups. We had, even though that we had focus groups for, in some cases, just exclusively parents, we had different people showing up. We had, sometimes we had grandparents. It was very interesting when we did our focus groups for the middle school. And it was interesting because we had parents who showed up and said, "Listen, I am here, I do have a middle schooler, but I also have a high school student too. So how should I respond? Should I go to both or can I go to one?" We also had parents who had middle school students, who also had elementary kids as well, who participated as well. In some cases, we had parents who had elementary kids who also had high school students as well. So these focus groups, focus groups were very, very diverse. Thank you, Don Miller, our, our data analyst, who spent countless hours on the development and implementation of our strategic plan and survey. You embark on this thinking, oh, create one survey. But to give the audience and the board a flavor on the creation of the survey, essentially, when you're creating a survey for parents, parents, alumni, administrators, teachers, parent-professional, parents who are educators, community members, retired teachers, I just named a couple off my, top of my head, that's eight. You're really creating eight different surveys for one survey. And that's just amazing. We also looked at the NEAS report, and I say "report," NEAS for the public who is unaware of that. It's the New Hampshire, I'm sorry, it's the New England Association of Schools and Colleges. It's basically an accreditation process that high schools go through every 10 years. And we used some of that data as well for the South. We haven't received the report back for the North. So, if I could just briefly, briefly outline the focus group process for the public and to reiterate what the focus group process was for the board. The focus group process started with a focus group session. But within that, we asked participants to respond to categories. And these categories were strengths, challenges, priorities, opportunities. We also asked people to give us some feedback on what they were looking at in our mission and vision and values for our district. All of the participants who were at our focus groups generated statements. And it wasn't just one statement per person. Some people had a lot to say and generated many statements. Some had a couple of things to say, there was a collaborative piece to that as well. But we certainly allowed every, every statement to be category, to, to be part of the discussion and we certainly documented it too. You heard Ms. Walsh talk about reading over 8,000 statements. And part of that has to do with creating a database for these statements. And when you embark on such a journey, you're thinking, well, it's only gonna take maybe half 400 to 200 statements. But we had over 8,000 statements that were generated from these focus groups. We had, Linda was part of that, our data specialist, Sue. Diane, were you part of that too? Okay. Stacy Hines, okay. Sorry, Stacy. And they sat down and they really looked at over 8,000 statements and created themes for these statements to be placed in. I'm gonna go to the theme part in a second. So, part of what was the most salient themes that emerged out of these 8,000 statements, culture, school culture, human capital, leadership, student programming, funding, support, discipline, professional development, facilities, collaboration, social-emotional learning, curriculum, communication, special education, equity reforms, resources and technology. So I read the first 15, top 15 statements, so to speak. I also wanted to show the public what the focus group's themes were in terms of the top three. And the top three were culture, human capital, and leadership. And culture is really, how do we do business? How do we treat each other? Is that word really respect, respect? And without a doubt, there are some very positive things in the culture of the national public schools. But let's be clear, there's some things that we can improve on in the national public schools in terms of culture. We can always get better at how we educate kids. We can always be better at understanding the needs of our students. We can always get better at understanding what our, what our students and all employees need for professional growth. And we can always get better in thinking about how we can be more efficient and, and creative in the budget process. And I'll talk more about that later. When we looked at, we distributed a survey, we made it available online. We also made the survey available in, in hard copies as well. And the survey was available to our students, our teachers, staff, teachers and paraprofessionals, staff and parents, parents, graduates, alumni, retired teachers, retired staff members and community members. So, if you look at the platable, uh, frequency and participation, by far, we received the most from our students. And thank you, students, for doing that. Received about 3,500 responses. And my next slide is going to share with you the top five priorities that were identified through this survey. Part of what we did, and we have teacher responses, the top five for teachers, staff members, top five for them, parents, top five for our parents who participated in the survey, and top five for community members. I'd like to stop and just kinda let this sink in a little bit. And it is clear that there are some important themes and priorities that went across all of the staff, of all of the participants in this survey. Number one, if you follow the, what I would say, the yellow brick road, the yellow highlights, you see improving social or social, mental health resources for our students. That also popped up in our staff members seeking, this was their top priority, improving social and mental and health services and resources for students. This same theme also popped up for parents. Improving social and mental and health resources for their children. And for community members, same thing. Improving social, mental, and health resources for their students. And what they're alluding to is social-emotional skills. Second thing that popped up that was across all four cata, all four demographics was improving school safety. For staff members and parents and community members, the third thing that popped up were preparing students more effectively for future college and career opportunity. And for staff members and parents and community members, they really wanted to make sure that addressing and preventing bullying in our schools as well. In our NEAS report that we got back from the accreditation process, they gave a series of recommendations. Several of them were germane to our strategic plan. I'm gonna paraphrase this because it's pretty wordy, but I wanted to capture the essence. There was this discussion about technology and improving technology and the budgetary needs of that. Creating a shared professional development vision for the school that aligns with district initiatives. So that's very important to understand, the alignment of district initiatives. And that speaks to the urgency and the appropriateness of having a strategic plan. Allowing students for professional collaboration with the goal to collect and disaggregate analyzed data to identify and respond to inequities, in response to inequities in student achievement. That speaks to our, our strategic plan. It speaks to our first, actually, goal in our strategic plan. I think this is providing the financial resources for professional development for staff, again, germane to our strategic plan. Provide the necessary support and resources to ESL or ELL programs to correspond with the significant increase in the ELL population. That line in itself speaks to our budget that we developed and presented to the board last year. But it also speaks to our strategic plan. But it also speaks to the slide that I showed this board and the changing demographics of our district. I'm not here telling you the demographics of this district are changing. The data and the NEAS individuals are telling you and advocating and giving us guidance and purpose on how we align our district goals and human capital to address something, this, this line in our NEAS report. I wanna talk a little bit about how we created our vision and mission and value for our, our strategic plan. Part of our focus groups, we asked them to, we basically asked them, what are you looking for in the mission? What are you looking for in the mission? And what values, or what do we want to hold true as a district? And so, we shift the, not we, but the individuals, I mentioned earlier, shifted through hundreds of statements, in some cases, thousands of statements, to narrow down the words that people really wanted in their mission and vision and value. And one of the things that stuck out consistently with vision was to be the best, to be the model, to be the, the beacon, be the place, not just be the best in New Hampshire, but be the best nationally. And so with this vision statement, it's the Nashua School District will be the model for excellence in public education for our students, staff, and community. Our mission, the Nashua School District will educate the whole child to empower student success. Notice "the whole child" and I'll speak to that a little later. But it was clear, through all of our information, that our faculty and our community did not want their kids to be data points. They wanted to be looked at through the whole child lens. And finally, the values is what do we value as a district? Who are we? Integrity, trust, respect, empathy. We always wanna have a sense of tenacity as well. If you notice, with the, with the creation of the vision, the mission, and the value, it was run through many filters, through our steering committee, our leadership committee. We spent hours on finally refining our vision and mission and value. And I want the committee to know, and I want the board to know, that we were intentional in making sure that it was no more than a sentence because we wanted people to remember it. So, part of this, and I want to talk about the shift to the whole child. In analyzing the data, it became clear that the collective community wanted to shift away from students as data points and view them through the whole child. This isn't new, it certainly is not. But I think it's important to understand that college employees have identified that graduates are lacking critical skills necessary for success in the workforce as a result of shifting away from the whole child. And you heard Ms. Walsh talk a little bit about this earlier, but federal mandates have impacted not just Nashua, but other communities as well. And these mandates are providing guidance. But yet, there's a funding mechanism and a reporting mechanism that's very important that some of these mandates are lacking. And then it's, you know, 2000, it doesn't necessarily matter about politics. But understand that, in anything that starts new, there's a level of financial and human capital that needs to follow through. And that did not happen in some cases, but it has had us, it has had an effect on this district. I'm gonna talk to you next about a working, researched definition on what the whole child looks like. This isn't Dr. Mosley coming up with his definition, or Ms. O'Gara, or anyone. This definition is from the Association of Supervision and Curriculum Development, ASAD, ASCD, excuse me, and the Center for Disease Control. And here's how we, here's how they define the whole child. Policies and practices and relationships that ensure each child in each school and each community is healthy, safe, engaged, supported, and challenged. It engages all stakeholders, educators, families, policymakers, and community members in defining the percentages proficient. Culture of too many school reform efforts to focus on each child. And, and it further raises the bar of accountability beyond the narrow singular, singular issue improvement. Strategies to, to efforts that reflect the broad array of factors influencing long-term success rather than short-term achievement. If I can synthesize that a little bit more, and I wanna focus on this, this last line. Influencing long-term success rather than short-term achievement. And when you don't, when you are in a classroom, when you have teaching experience, when you have administrative experience, and when you've been on that ground level, you understand that all of our kids come to us with different levels of engagement. All of them have the ability to grow. And that learning is never stagnant, it is constant. And yes, our kids should be proficient, but some of them need more than just a test. They need intervention, they need support, and they need that scaffolding to get to that next level. Let's take another source about the whole child and social-emotional learning. This is a quote from Governor Sununu, our governor. The state of New Hampshire's 2018 School Safety Preparedness Task Force, and here's what he had to say, making reference to this task force, is that the singular, singular most important document this state has ever produced surrounding school safety, one of the most important recommendations contained in this report is the need to expand social-emotional learning, SEL. SEL. Quote, Governor Sununu. I agree with the governor. Our data agrees with the governor. Our teachers agree with the governor. But this is definitely something that is necessary for us. Let's go one step further and define social emotional learning. What is it? Social emotional learning is defined as the process through which children and adults acquire and effectively apply the knowledge, attitude, and skills necessary to understand and manage emotions, to set and achieve positive goals and feelings, and show empathy for others, to establish and maintain positive relationships, and make responsible decisions. Sometimes you ask, well, you know, it's a good question. Well, you have this nice visual, can you break that visual down? Can you tell me what that looks like? And social emotional, social emotional learning are skills. They are skills that help support academic achievement. And a fair question would be, well, show me the data, show me the research that shows that social emotional skills work or they don't work. And I can do that for you tonight. Social emotional, SEL skills are not new skills, they're the old skills that we've had for a long, long time. SEL helps students to be successful in schools and colleges and their jobs, and I will show you the research on that. The other piece is that it's fair to say, well, what does social emotional learning look like through the lenses of self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and decision-making? And to give you a snapshot of what that looks like, and I'm not going to read through all of the bullet points, but through the lens of self-awareness, social emotional skills give that person, or that teacher, or that student, the understanding of that self-confidence, the self-efficacy, the identification of emotions, self-management, self-regulation, self-discipline. Having the ability to listen to something, and even if you vehemently disagree with it, to be able to say, okay, I respectfully disagree. Goal setting, setting goals, stress management, social awareness is, perspectives taking into empathy, appreciating diversity and respecting others, even though you may or may not agree with them. Relationship skills, communication, social engagement, collaboration. You know, I wish I had a camera when we started this process with our group, because it took quite some time for us to grow together. And I say grow together, because nothing's ever perfect. Yes, we had conflicts, but we were able to address those conflicts and come to compromise, even though we had disagreements. It was never all or nothing. And see, down below, it's around negotiation skills. These are, these are skills I'm saying, and I'm promoting, and this strategic plan is promoting, that we want to teach and in some cases, support and champion for our kids. Because these are skills that they will use in the workforce and in this global economy. And decision-making is identifying problems, analyzing situations, and being able to solve problems. Like to say that this is, excuse me, a nice quote, just reiterating some of the points, Julie DeLuca, Assistant Principal in Muramak, which she clarified to her school board concerning social emotional learning. Social emotional skills are not mental health, it's not mental health treatment. There is this misperception, and I know because it is a growing field, and I understand, but we are not treating students for mental health. We are not screening students for mental health disorders. This is a skill-based program, skills that are connected to career and college readiness. So again, educators aligning themselves with the governor's message and our data also calling for this shift in how we look at the whole child. The question that I proposed is two slides ago, is it's fair to say, how does social emotional learning affect academics? It's a fair question. What's the research behind that? The state of New Hampshire, as I said earlier, in 2018, had a School Safety Preparedness Task Force, and there were some key findings to this. SEL has been linked to academic achievement scores that are 11% higher on average when compared with students who are not instructed with social emotional skills. SEL instruction has been shown to include increased motivation to learning, and stronger commitment to students, and increase in time on homework, and improved classroom behavior with this, with the teaching of the skills of social emotional learning. SEL instruction has been shown results in decreasing in disruptive behaviors in class when students have had exposure to social emotional learning. And so this isn't, I'm not making this up, this isn't a document that was authored by anyone in this district, this is coming from the state of New Hampshire's 2018 School Safety Preparedness Report. And you have that link in your packet, if you would like to take a look at that and review it. The next part of this has to deal with our goals and action steps, and really, key points within our goals. Goal one, increase and monitor student academic growth using building-based and district-wide instructional supports. Really, this goal is about learning. And this goal is connected to all of our goals that you will hear later. But essentially, this is the why, why we're here. We educate kids, we educate them. We provide them with an education at a very young age, essentially, from when they're, you know, kindergarten's all the way up to when they're walking across that stage. And this is why we're here. And in this first goal, you'll see coordination of instructional practices, talking and setting a course for professional development, establishing long-awaited and long overdue on vertical and curriculum alignment, the development of a health curriculum that Ms. Walsh mentioned earlier, the examination of student growth through the lens of the whole child, that's important. The development of a student growth assessment matrix. And this is important because we're shifting away from identifying kids through one test, and we're looking at the whole child through a multitude of assessments, and providing the professional development to implement that. The other thing that you see in the personnel, yes, this plan calls for increase in personnel. And we make no apologies for that. We need more people to do the job, and I'm not, and we're not apologizing for that. And when we start to ask people to do more, pay them a little more, but not compensate them, and you combine jobs against jobs, they become very frustrated, they leave us. And other districts take our talented individuals. And quite frankly, we want to stop that. That's what this plan is proposing. There was some discussion around structural leadership teams in all of our buildings. When you work in education, when you've taught in the classroom, when you've worked on teams and in departments, you have to have an understanding of coordination. You have to have an understanding as a building and as a district where you're going. Because if you don't have these teams, then you're on the rocks, as I showed you. And so these teams are going to provide a level of coordination within our buildings, but more important, that connection to central office, where we can get a handle and get information out to our leadership teams within the building, so that we are all on the same page. And right now, we're not. For the last three years, our buildings have not been on the same page when it comes to curriculum. We want to stop it. All of our buildings have not been on the same page when it comes to instruction. This plan's going to stop it. Goal two, cultivate a safe and nurturing learning environment, learning and working environment. This has to do with our earlier discussion around SEL practices and skills across all districts, has to do with tying the SEL components to our mission, to our values as a district. Part of what was mentioned earlier, when we talk about learning and working environments, we have lost too many faculty. No one should be proud of losing 61 employees. No one should be proud of having people who have taken on more than what their share is. We need the support, and they need the support. We need the support, not just promoting and saying, let's do SEL, but let's do it with fidelity. Let's make sure that all of our teachers have adequate PD, and I'll get the PD in a second, on SEL, trauma-sensitive classrooms, and cultural proficiencies and competencies. We need that level of support. We talk about student behaviors, I get it. That's why we need more people to be what, rather than, the question isn't about responding to the behavior, the question is, let's get some people out there, let's engage our kids to be proactive, so we get people who are visible to prevent that type of behaviors when it comes to students, and help them make good choices. We proposed here task forces to help us get to report out, but to coordinate, to make sure that when all of our students, all of our teachers are practicing and teaching SEL, there's a common language for that. When we talk about student behavior, there's a common language for that, but there's also policies and procedures aligned to that common understanding. And our middle school steering committee, what are middle schools, and this is going to come up again, because we're in the process of building three new middle schools within our city. And our middle school steering committee.
I'm sorry, can we listen, do you have a?
That's an overwhelming statement that has not been discussed or approved. We're not building three middle schools.
No, that is correct.
And to suggest that we are is really a misrepresentation.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. I am fairly certain that Dr. Mosley misspoke. We are embarking on a possible renovation project of our three middle schools.
That's fine.
And possibly a new one, depending on what the JSBC decides. Okay, so thank you for the clarification. Let's let Dr. Mosley finish his presentation.
I misspoke, I apologize. I guess I stopped, to be honest with you. I think part of what I say is that, we've got the public here, and everyone has their chance to speak, but I find it quite unsettling that when I'm talking, there are people talking over there that just says to me, and to my colleagues, and to the people here who've worked on this, that there's some challenges in terms of, all I ask is just to be respectful, and just please listen to me, and then when I'm done, I'll listen to you. That's what I would ask of our kids, and I'm just asking out of the board. Thank you.
Okay, so if we can please hold our comments and questions till the end, just mark them down. Go ahead, Dr. Mosley.
As I was saying, we have our district safety committees as well for goal two. Goal three, by far, this district has had challenges with our professional development, particularly around how it has been ruled out, the timing of it, what's being offered, and this by far came up on a variety of lenses. Our teachers are eager to get more professional development on a variety of topics that we have, that I've mentioned here in the strategic plan, but also in curriculum assessment and student engagement. The other piece to this that I think is important is that I believe that our administrators are in need of professional development too, in terms of how we are evaluating the teaching and learning process. And I say this, that I'd like for us to, as a district, to improve our interrelated reliability amongst our administrators when we're doing the evaluation, and not that there's been issues, but I always think that we can get better. I always believe that when we have new administrators coming on board, when we have new people entering into the district, this serves as an opportunity for us to come together as a leadership team, to make sure that when a teacher is getting an evaluation back at Mount Pleasant, and they're getting an evaluation at bicentennial, and it's the same exact lesson, they should get the same consistent feedback. And we're committed to doing that. And I've always believed that as superintendent and as a district, we could always, always get better. Finally, sorry, excuse me. Goal number four is increased frequency of strategic partnership and community communication. This speaks to our parent outreach and forging those relationships with outside organizations. Part of when we did the focus groups, there was overwhelming feedback that our parents and our community members absolutely loved the face-to-face with myself and with Sue Porter. And we had, at one particular event, it really resonated with me, with the middle school parents, they said, we would love to have a district, a citywide open forum like this for all of our middle school parents to come to, to just come and talk, to collaborate, to talk about middle school, to see what it's all about, and certainly, we've heard that. The other piece that I've said, I've said it publicly, and I can say this privately and publicly, that there are so many outside organizations in our community, at the state level as well, that really want to partner with the national public schools. We just don't have someone in our district office that can cultivate, actively respond back to all of these inquiries around partnership. We have internship programs that are in our district, but given all of the things we offer in our CTE programs, our high school, even within our teaching force, we don't have a person to coordinate that and for people to reach out to. And as a result, we have these silos of internships, we have these silos of volunteers doing things bits and pieces. So this goal speaks to really better engaging our community and strategically forging and maintaining these partnerships. The other thing that this goal speaks to has to do with communication. A district this size has a, I would say, a large amount of communication that needs to happen internally and externally. And it doesn't matter whether someone writes it or not, that level of communication is still taking place, whether there's documentation coming from me, or from the board, or anything. And we need to be better at communicating within our district, in terms of the happenings and what's going on, but also to our community, in terms of how we can better partner and collaborate. I can't tell you the number of times that I get a phone call from a parent or organization that, I'd like to start this, but I don't know who's going to be the conduit for that. And this goal speaks to improving our relationships and partnerships with our outside agencies and the communication piece within our community as well. Finally, our goal number five speaks to creating a budget matrix that aligns the district-wide priorities with future budget cycles. As we talked earlier about, there are some capital improvement plans to improve our school buildings and infrastructure. We are in the middle of a middle school project, there is talk of renovation, renovation, and there's also talk about building one new school. So there's, we put that in our strategic plan to be cognizant of that. We acknowledge that there are outward district costs for our special education programs, and we're acknowledging that we need to, we are looking at creative ways to address that increase that has taken place over the last two to three years. We also have to recognize that our teachers need competitive salaries. And Nashua is in a very unique situation because we're right next to Massachusetts. And we lose our teachers because of, as I mentioned, working conditions, but also, in some cases, some of our teachers can go to our, to different districts and make $10,000, sometimes $15,000 more. Some of our administrators can do that as well. And so I don't want to become the training ground for other districts. I want to retain our teachers that we train, and our talented ones in our district. And we have to be cognizant of that when we think about our budget cycles, and also our work here as a district. We also need to be cognizant that our facilities always need improvement, and certainly being mindful of what that feels like and looks like in the next five years as well. So I want to be very clear that the strategic plan... So, I want to be very clear that the strategic plan related to the goals is a shift in our silos of operation in a way that we're going to do better job within our schools and in the district around culture and collaboration. It's a shift from defining student success using data points to acknowledging student success through the lens of the whole child. It's a shift to providing equity of educational experiences across the schools for all learners on the academic spectrum. It's a shift in providing and understanding the essence of embedding social and emotional skills across all grade levels to enhance school safety, to support the vision, the mission, the values, more importantly, to support our students. It's a shift in how we look at student behavior. We are going to do a better job at it, but we have to get it on board and get that common language on how we're going to talk about student behavior. It's a shift on how the district provides ongoing PD for our faculty. Little controversy, but I had to compromise. When I'm talking about professional development, I'm not talking about professional development exclusively for teachers or paraprofessionals. I'm talking about professional development for everyone, custodians, secretaries. T is, everyone is in need of professional development. Everyone is in contact and influences our students. It's a shift in the district culture to increase frequency of strategic planning and community communication. We have businesses and partners and religious organizations that want to partner with our schools. We have colleges that want to create internships for our kids. Let's do it. We have kids from the colleges, teacher colleges, that would love to come to Nashua to do their student teaching. Let's provide, but I'd use the infrastructure to provide our community to increase their engagement for our students, students into the school. It's a shift to the restoration of critical personnel as well as the recruitment and retention of quality educators and administrators to support student learning. Finally, second... This is the second-to-last side. I just want to iterate, the vision of the district is to be the model. We make no apologies on what we're asking the board to approve tonight. The strategic plan was crafted entirely from feedback received from the community-based focus groups, the UNH Climate Survey, the Strategic Plan Survey, federal legislation, and the governor's, when he made reference to this, New Hampshire, School Safety Preparedness Task Force. This feedback mirrors the current professional research and best practices that promote student safety and motivation. The Nashua Public Schools in district celebrates instructional practices that will educate the whole child and provide student success. Finally, I'd like to leave the board and the public with this visual. We're asking tonight for the Nashua School Board to approve this plan that will increase school safety, deepen motivation to learning, improve student achievement for the whole and every child in Nashua. This plan needs your approval. I'll leave you with two quotes, one from JFK and one from Jimmy Dean. JFK wrote, "Effort and courage are not enough without purpose and direction." Jimmy Dean's quote, "We can't change the direction of the wind, but we can adjust our sails to always reach our destination." Now, I'll say this to the board, that in contrast to this quote from Jimmy Dean, we cannot select the students that walk through our door. We cannot. But we can help provide them with the resources and the guidance and love to some extent, to help them reach their destinations as young adults and as kids. And so, I thank you for your time. I'm looking forward to the questions and answers. And I just want to thank the public, the people who work behind the scenes for their time, their time away from their families, and certainly the summertime that we spent on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. That was a very comprehensive overview of the strategic plan and introduction. Okay. I think we're going to stay where we're at. Mr. Garino?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we approve the Nashua School District Strategic Plan.
Second.
I'd like to speak to the motion.
Okay.
Some people will always see the glass half-empty, and it's very easy to sit on the sidelines and throw bricks. But I want to commend and congratulate everyone who took the time out from their busy day to be part of this, no matter if their part was small or large. I want to thank the teachers, administration, support staff, Tara and Gabby. Thank you, Dr. Mosley and Ms. Porter. Everyone who served on the steering committee and the leadership team, the principals, parents, teachers, student reps, and business people. A lot of thought and hard work went into this strategic plan. I want you to know that I read it. I will read it again. I'm listening, and I'll do my best to facilitate implementation of the plan because I think that's an important part. Once it's written and it's out there and approved, we have to implement it. Learning is a lifetime thing, and focusing on the whole child, graduating students who are lifetime learners, that's a very smart strategy, a long-term strategy. And I think this strategic plan is worthy of our votes on this board and worthy of approval.
Thank you, Mr. Garino. Ms. Hohensy.
Thank you. That's a lot of things to say. I mean, do we each get sixty minutes to present? I prepared from the previous copy in the packet. We didn't get three days to look at this presentation, and this packet was different than the previous packet, and there was no red lines in between. I feel like there's a moving target to a certain extent. But I would like to thank Mrs. Walsh. I thought she did a very respectful job. I thought she was very comprehensive and very thoughtful. I thought Mr. Farrington was very interesting tonight. He was the only parent that came here. I was hoping that we'd have a hearing of parents because I don't think two or three parents out of the eighty-three that I can tell had feedback were in favor of SEL. Does that mean eighty were against SEL? I don't know. The only parent that came tonight was opposed. So, it leaves a lot of question what the final package is. And we're using terms differently. We're redefining English. Whole child is a presumptuous term. Who wants to teach a fractured child? Of course, we all want to teach a whole child, but we might mean different things by that. Choosing love. I mean, who doesn't support love? So, I mean, you've got to get through the buzzwords and start looking at the details of this package. I have a job to my constituents to be thorough. Social-emotional learning is in here as across all levels. We only have a pilot for K-5. Why are we planning to spend money for K-12? And it's like a bait and switch. There was zero cost when we put it in. Now, we're looking at 4.8 million. I mean, we went up from fifty-six new staff members in this packet. Now, we have 57.7 members of new staff, and we don't even have enrollment. We have declining enrollment. As Mr. Farrington kindly told us, we have a 6% decrease in staff over the past years, sixty-one members, but a thousand less students, a 9% decrease. I don't see the problem. What we're trying to do is put in a whole new program that I'm not sure parents have even understood. The question, as Mr. Farrington pointed out, no question was on the survey for reading at grade level by the third grade. So, do we have a skewed survey? Because if you control the questions, you're certainly going to control the answers. There was... There's no budget projections for the next thirteen years. This goes thirteen years, even though it's a five-year plan. I'd like to see our current expenses, the increases for transportation and special ed, the increases for wages, the increases for this strategic plan, and how that plays out. We're talking over 3% a year, and do we have them? I mean, why are we committing something if we don't have Mr. Donovan putting out actual bottom-line projections of what type of money we're talking? Is that irresponsible? And then, we're going to have an ad hoc committee for determining what our developmental and societal norms and culture is. We have a collective... We have diversity. We embrace diversity, but then we're trying to consolidate it down to this collective single process. It's a behavior modification. That is mental health. You're saying we're going to have less violence. I don't know if I've seen the proof because I don't see any peer-reviewed studies, but you're saying we're going to have less violence because we're going to talk about making positive emotions, and we're not talking about psychologists. We're talking about teachers who are overworked. God bless them. I love them, but we're adding one more thing to them. And we're getting fifty-seven staff members. We're not helping those teachers that are on the front line, so it's not exactly equitable. We've got restorative justice in this program. We've never discussed that as a board. We had a parent come in here and say that they had a seven-year-old being taught reverse racism in his class, and he was concerned about it. We were supposed to take that to committee. It never got to committee, but it's in the strategic plan. We have an org chart in here that's rather amazing. We've got the old one from 2006 or 2008, and granted, it was updated, but we have a new one that says it was updated in fall of eighteen. It was really January of seventeen, and it's wrong. It's changed the roles for the assistant superintendents from what the, on our website org chart is. So, that's not... So, if we're changing our org chart, it needs to go to policy committee. We have a policy saying no emergency changes to our org chart or any policies, and it's to go through committee. So, here we are, making an emergency change, adding an assistant principal, and last time it was instruction and learning or something, and now we've got a new title for it. We have a list of tasks that she's supposed to do, but we have no job description despite requests for them. I mean, how do we hire new people if we don't have a job description? A lot of the tasks she's taking is taking it over from the other two superintendents. It's not clear to me as a board member where the duties are going to fall. I'm just supposed to jump for this because two out of eighty-three or three out of eighty-three parents might like it. There's no... And we have a critical need for special education in-house. We need to look at that. We need to save the money so we can put in this reform, but that's delayed to 2024. That's kind of crazy. And then, for SEL itself, social-emotional learning, it's behavior manipulation and engineering on an emotional level for minors. Where's the informed written consent? Is the district going to reassure me that we're going to ask parents for informed written consent? Because if we did this outside the school building, everybody would lose their license for trying to do this. And these are non-academic assessments. We have state law and the federal law that says you have to have informed written consent. We also have a policy for this. We also have a policy to say parents can opt out. I don't see... I don't get any reassurance that even if it was two or three parents that didn't want this could opt their kid out. Because we're compelling students to attend upon instruction. Traditionally, it's literacy and numeracy, but now we're doing behavior modification. What if a parent of an emotionally challenged child or an autistic-spectrum child does not want this and feels that it'd be damaging for their child? What are their options? Pull the kid out of school? Are we backing them against a wall with a skewed survey and no discussion on restorative justice, no discussion on the org chart change, no discussion of a job description, and a price tag of $4.8 million once you add the benefits for the forty-eight new staff members that are in here? It's such a leap. I don't know where to begin, but I cannot support it. It needs to be a change. It should have been worked on by the board itself so we could have gotten these things ironed out at the beginning instead of having a surprise at the end. And every presentation, every work session we have, we get a presentation out of the blue that we don't get to review, and we, as a board, don't get to talk to each other about what we like and what we don't like and how we could fix it to make something that we could all support. I'm just very disappointed with the whole process, but thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Hohensy. I do have a question regarding... You had a number of comments, but one of the things that stood out to me was your issues with the organizational chart.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm looking it up online right now, and I'm trying to figure out what's different between what's online and what's on this paper because, to me, these look...
Okay. The date is wrong. It says fall of 2018 on this paper in our packet.
Right.
But it's January of seventeen online. It says the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, but that was struck. And then, we have an Assistant Superintendent for Accountability and Assessment. That was struck.
Mm-hmm.
Are we changing the org chart? If you're pulling it down, you would think it would be identical to what's online. And looking at the job dis... The beginnings of a job description, the list of tasks that we want our new superintendent to do, that person would be pulling some of these tasks. It's all being reorganized, but we have to approve those changes. I'm not seeing each one of the three laid out to even know whether we should hire this new one. So, how can I make... It's like a thousand decisions in one in this packet, all these hires, all this change, all this shift away from academics to the whole child as opposed to the fractured child. To me, I mean, that's just putting us in a very awkward position. We all want the whole child. We all want what's best for the children. So, that's... It's unnecessarily divisive.
Okay. I understand your quibbles with the verbiage. I guess when I'm looking at what's on the website, I'm seeing... The only difference that I'm seeing is the titles, Assistant Superintendent from Curriculum and Instruction to for Elementary, and Assistant Superintendent for Accountability and Assessment for Secondary. But underneath it, everything is the same.
Underneath it, it says immediately, "Elementary principals or high school principals."
Right. So, everything is the same. It's just those two...
You didn't need to change it. Yes. But why put this in? Why put this in our packet if it's wrong?
I don't know.
So, it makes you wonder how much... So, you're starting to second-guess everything you get.
Okay.
So...
Ms. Van Twyver?
I also have a problem. There was another org chart in here. I... It has a date of 7/31/06 and a draft of 4/30/08. And this... I don't know what this is, if this is the proposed new structure. If that's the case, there's going to... We need to discuss that. I don't see any support for... I don't see any Director of Community, Stacey Hines', position on here. And then, if we vote... I thought we had voted a .2 increase so that she could work more hours during the week. Now, whether that went through or not, I don't remember. Did it go through?
It did. So, she's up to .8, I believe.
But now, the superintendent's talking about a .2 communications person for outreach and/or other organizations and all that stuff. So, where is that two-point coming from?
Well, I just...
And so, I don't know what the purposes of this is. If he's proposing that, I didn't hear that anything in the design here in talking about that today.
Can we ask Dr. Mosley that question before you go on to another topic?
Right.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I just want to... I don't want to lose your questions in follow-up questions. Does that make sense?
Right.
I'll come right back to you. So, Dr. Mosley, regarding the organizational charts, I, too, was confused about this one from Policy 1300 because that's not an existing policy anymore.
I think... And it's a fair question. Thank you, Ms. Van Twyver. What we were showing you, if you look at the... This is what Central Office looked like in 2006. Look at all of these positions that are connected to Central Office. And then, when you look, when you compare that to the current structure, you see that there's been reductions in those positions that once existed, and they were through attrition, that they were since combined or, in some cases, eliminated. And so, you know, Central Office in 2006 looked... or in some cases eliminated. And so, you know, central office in 2006 looked very differently than central office in 2017. I think the best example that I can give you is Bob Choper's position. And Bob Choper has almost, I'll tell you what he's responsible for. He's responsible for homeless and liaison coordinator throughout the entire district. He's responsible for ELL. He's responsible for student services. He's responsible for, you know, McKinney and Vento responsibilities. I think I'm missing one more. Oh, the nurses. He's responsible for the nurses. And so with that said, his one job as being the director of student services has now taken on other responsibilities that once had full-time people there. And if you look at this organizational chart, I'm trying to find where his, where his position was at one point. His job was at one point, one job that existed. Yes, we have less students, but the responsibility of maintaining and coordinating and responding to state mandates on McKinney and Vento haven't changed. The responsibility of the nurses' requirement and supervising the nurses and getting back to them in their capacity, that hasn't changed. The responsibility of just student services, making sure that, you know, when there's appeals for suspension, variances, district-wide, that hasn't changed. We just hired four more ELL teachers for Bob to be, in principals, to be responsible for. So what this chart, essentially what we wanted to show you in this chart is that the, there, these are the positions that existed in 2006 at the district-wide level, and those jobs have been eliminated and combined, and now this is the new organizational chart in 2019.
Okay.
I have quite a few other things, too.
Yes.
I'm very disappointed that there's nothing in here about reading at grade level.
Okay.
I don't care. Ever since I've been on this board, we've been champing about that. And I don't care. You have to have data to prove whether you're making a success or not. The other thing is that I don't know how you're going to prove success in this program. We have had so many programs that come and go in this depart, in this district, and we have no way of showing that they were successful or not. They just kind of seem to fade in the, in the background, and we never hear about them again, so we don't bring it up. I'd like to know how we're going to document that we're making a success on this strategic plan. The other thing is that you've added six new task force to the student, to the teacher's workload. When are they going to have time to teach? That's what Mr. Farrington was saying, too. I just don't have the feeling that we're going in the right direction. I know the state has talked about this SEL. Those items that you mentioned on the different learning things, half of those stuff should be taught by teach, for the parents. And, and I don't think we need to have, if we have to teach our teachers how to behave, how to be good to the students and prove, bring them along, I just have a real problem with that. I can't imagine, as I said in another meeting, the way you talk to students is very important. And so I just don't feel like this is going in the right direction for me, but then I'm old school.
Thank you, Ms. Van Twyver. Mr. Guarino?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about the, I just had a quick question about the clarification of this chart, organizational chart. These are in the appendix, right? So this is, was approved fall 2018, so we're not really approving, when we approved this plan, this is already existing, so we don't have to amend anything as far as organizational charts.
No, it is, no. In fact, this chart comes directly from policy CCA, and policy CCA has a different title for the assistant superintendents.
Oh, they do have a different title.
And it was approved by the board in January 2017.
Oh, January 2017. So there is, so...
There are errors on that.
Oh, so there's just errors on, on this, but we're not, we're not necessarily changing the organization. This is just for illustrative purposes.
I'm not asking the board to change organization. No, I was just illustrating, and I guess this speaks to the other piece to this. And I'm glad that the confusion around what's being posted, what's not being posted, you're right. It actually speaks to the strategic plan. We don't have a webmaster or someone who's watching the gate here. So you're, we can stay on the rocks, keep having these discussions, or we can do something and have a purpose and get to the direction. So in this strategic plan, you'll see a proposal for communications director to add .2. And you're going to say, well, what does that mean? You're going to add more? Yes, because I want to shift this conversation away from confusion to actually having it documented, to actually having accurate documents on that. So the position of communication director is going to be supervising the web and the information that's on the web. But right now, it's done individually by school. It's done individually by different people, and we need to do a better job communicating this, in this case, picking up on the discrepancies. But understand, this is a snapshot because you have people doing so many different things and wearing so many different hats, that yes, things get lost in translation, and it feels like the ball's being dropped. But you can't do everything, and that's what we're proposing.
So if this is, if this chart is in the final, this is a draft, so if you print out a final, and people want a final, you'll update this based on that. So we don't have to approve anything as far as that goes. Also, yeah, also, I just wanted, there's some other typos in there. Just one typo on, on two. It says leaning instead of learning. I think it's page eight. Just to, I'm sorry to, but in the draft, it says...
Can I blame someone? That's Lisa Yates.
On, on, on number two.
Number two.
Yeah. Okay. The title.
I'm sorry, Ray. Can you just, I'm sorry, Mr. Guarino, could you please clarify, like, on page two?
On page, I think it's on page eight. I'm sorry, it's...
Page eight, goal number two. It's in bold.
Goal, goal number two. I had a brain squeeze there. Goal number two, it says, the title, it should say learning instead. It says leaning, I think, and should say learning.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino.
Yep.
Mr. Kaufman, thank you for your patience.
Thank you. My comments are directed at the written plan given to the board, not the presentation that was given to us tonight, which of course, as Ms. Hoencey said, we did not receive according to policy ahead of time. I hadn't intended to read this, but I guess this is the only way I can put a comment in tonight. The plan as presented still does not include any current or historical analysis of enrollment data. Enrollment data drives everything in the district from the various types of state funding, federal funding, grant awards, staffing, class size, resource allocation and utilization. Without an honest discussion of declining enrollment of many years, along with the spending cap requirement, all conclusions are deceiving and without full context. Omitting trends of enrollment data and its impact on every aspect of the district is intellectually dishonest, intentionally misleading, and continues to undermine my confidence in the superintendent's district, I'm sorry, and continues to undermine my confidence in the superintendent's district leadership and authorship of this strategic plan. There is no reference to the budget or any spending analysis. This is absolutely necessary. There needs to be a line chart showing the district costs over the past 10 years. I said 10 years because that is the, that is what the, that is what has been presented in the demographic chart. We need to see an annual budget projections for the time period covered by this proposal, including staffing increases and salary projections, special ed and transportation expenses. As part of this, there needs to be a focus on the expense lines that dictate our spending. These include special education, special education out of district placement, salaries, I'm sorry to repeat, salaries, transportation and information technology. There are likely others. Once these continually, continually increasing expense items are identified, each needs to be examined and analyzed for future trends and a plan put in place to address each cost driver. Without this analysis, the strategic plan has little value. Interestingly, the focus group data does not reflect on or understand the baseline data of the district, namely enrollment data, demographic data, budgetary data, including increasing expense items, all of which are required by law or contract. The plan does not include evaluation of the SEL pilot. Can we have a chart that shows what activities will take place and what timeframe? Section 5.2, out-of-district special education activity is scheduled for 2024. This is the district's most urgent need. It cannot wait for 2024. It needs to be addressed now. Without it, you'll never get my vote. It's as simple as that. I have problems with a plan that ends in 2024 and makes recommendations out to the year 2032. The board created an ad hoc committee to produce the report. Has the strategic planning committee discussed, recommended, and approved this proposal? I would like to see a signed, written recommendation from the committee. This committee statement should be part of the plan. I would like to repeat my request for a public board session whereby the strategic planning committee formally submits the report and answers questions of the board in public. This would add formality and closure to the committee's work. The narrative mentions best practices. What best practices and by what authority? I tried to get this board to consider best practices in budgeting, but they voted against it. I don't know of any best practices in this plan. Please point them out and explain them fully. There is no summary of the physical infrastructure. There is no mention of the number or types of schools we have. This document as written is not a standalone document. It requires prior knowledge of the district since the plan omits very important baseline information. This report is an example of writing the report and then justifying its conclusion. The report states on page two, quote, personnel changes that have occurred since the end of the last strategic plan were also factors that influenced the direction of this strategic plan. A total of 61.6 positions that directly supported the culture that ensures academic excellence have been eliminated since 2010. This loss of personnel has been reestablished in the 2019-24 strategic plan. I now understand the goal of the strategic plan has been to restore personnel numbers. Of course, the various unions like the idea. More people, more revenue to them. Data needs to drive the plan. I want to know what data is available to the district. What data do we use now? How do we use this identified data to inform district decisions such as budget, curriculum, staffing? What additional data should be acquired, or should we be acquiring or using that we don't use now? This plan as presented remains incomplete. Several important aspects are not yet addressed or even identified. This plan was supposed to be completed in June. Here we are now entering August, and this is the first version of the document that attempts to include a narrative in demographic data, albeit without any analysis. At this point in time, the superintendent is focused on responding to board feedback and trying to backfill information that should have been acquired and used at the beginning of the process rather than here at the approval stage. There is no mention of graduation rates or college or career-bound data. Should we not be tracking this and maximizing the programs for these very diverse student populations? The district focus needs to be on preparing our students for their next step. It could be college or the skilled workforce. We have an overwhelming focus on college-bound with honors and AP classes. Yet only 44% of our students go to college, and I don't know how true that is because we've never gotten a real number. We need to equalize the opportunity and focus equal attention to those students not going to college. Therefore, I propose again that one high school be college-bound focused and the other vocationally focused. The strategic plan is deficient without a discussion and analysis of this proposal. I ask again, will the superintendent please use change bars in the document and document revision in the various documents that are produced? I have one last comment I would like to make to the general public and the board. What you're seeing here is strong criticism of the plan at the end of the process. You should know that professionally managed projects avoid this type of activity because in these types of projects, expectation of the decision-makers are understood at the beginning so that they can be researched and analyzed in the proposal. This was never done, and that is why the plan is perceived as incomplete. Oh, I would ask that the union member, the union titles of the steering committee members be added to the report. So we have two union presidents that are listed as being on the steering committee, but they are not identified as such, and I think they should be. I have a note here about the organizational chart being incorrect and reflecting changes not approved by the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Hold on. I'd like to know if anyone who hasn't spoken has a comment. Ms. Timmons?
I'm sorry, Ms. Raymond, do have a comment. We listened to Mr. Kaufman for quite a while. We had looked, we listened to Ms. Hoencey quite a while. I think we haven't listened to, we did listen to Ms. Van Twyver. That motion still is out on the floor, and I'd like to vote on it. Because no matter what, if these particular individuals started from scratch and they started their strategic plan, it would have been fine, but because there was non-grassroots, there is not fine. So no matter what we do or how we do it, they will not agree with it, and we should go ahead and vote. The motion is on the floor, and we should vote on this plan. If they don't want to vote, so be it.
Okay, thank you. So just to...
Is she moving the question?
He's not calling the question. No, wait one second, please. I'm, hold on. I have the floor now.
Okay.
Okay? If we could not all speak at once, that would be helpful. Thank you. I want to be clear on the motion. The motion was, can you read back the motion?
Motion is to approve the Nashua School District strategic plan.
Okay, so that is only the strategic plan, right? Only this, only this thing, the goals, right? Does that, and also the, the mission and the vision and the values. That's it.
There's the narrative as well that we received here.
Everything.
Are you asking me?
No, I'm asking, I guess, I'm asking your intent because...
My intent is to approve the Nashua School District strategic plan as it has been presented to us. That includes, that includes the narrative, the title page, the table of contents, every, all the narratives, everything up to the appendices, the whole kit and caboodle.
Okay, well then, I think, Ms. Porter?
If I were to make the motion, I would move to accept the Nashua School District 2019-2024 strategic plan, the mission, the vision, and the values, the goals, and the action steps. So that is the heart of the plan. I think that the appendices will certainly be posted online and available to the public, but the heart of the plan is this right here. So the motion should be to accept that these are supporting documents. They're, I think that we don't, you know, this is a living document. We don't want to be tied to every time if we have to change a comma or a period on the appendices to have to come back for board approval.
So are, to clarify, are you asking, are you proposing to amend the motion?
I could amend it, yes.
Okay.
So is that...
Yes, so I will, I move to amend the motion to read, recommended approval of the Nashua School District 2019-2024 strategic plan with the mission, vision, values, goals, and action steps.
Could you, could you repeat that again?
Okay. Mission, vision, values.
Mission, vision, values.
Goals and action steps.
And action plan.
Action steps.
Goals and action steps. And what I will do is I'll take that as a friendly amendment and withdraw my amendment in Ms. Timmons' head's second.
Wait, 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 wait. procedurally, this is an amendment?
Okay.
Or are you, you're withdrawing your... Or are you, you're withdrawing your motion and using this one? Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, I will not withdraw my, my motion, but I'll take that as a friendly amendment. I apologize.
Same difference.
Can I get in some more?
Yes, Mr. Moser.
Go ahead, Ms. Moser. I'm sorry.
I'm listening to this with a lot of bated breath and amusement. You know, it's funny, you know, you've been on the board for a good number of years, and you've seen the way things have changed over time. And I see, you know, some of the things that have been said, then the critique of this and that and the other thing, and they didn't put this in, they didn't put that in, and I don't like the way they did this, I don't like the way they did that. Well, I'll tell you, you know, a plan, whether you call it a strategic plan or what, a plan is a very fluid document, and it changes from time to time because like the boat on the rocks, that, you know, there's obstacles and changes and weather and whatnot that get in the way. Over the course of time, I've seen the elimination of so many people from the main office that had diverse jobs. I've seen the, the collapse in many ways of the student body where it has gone down. Actually, it's gone down about 1,500 kids. And the people in the main office, the number of teachers and everything, I've seen that the way the, because of the eliminations, I think the way they have struggled along to, to teach and to go along with the programs and the development, et cetera. But, you know, like, like I was saying about the plan, it's very fluid, and it can change quickly. And the plan is made so that over time, when there's a change that has to be made, it can be made. That plan is a guide. Nobody does anything without going, but you don't go to a grocery store without having a plan in your mind of what you're going to do over the week to make dinners, or what you have to do to get to make lunches, or something like that. So whatever you do, it's, it's fluid. Change at a moment's notice. So you can start off and say, well, I'm going to go to Market Basket. On the way to Market Basket, you say, oh, wait a minute, I gotta do this, I gotta do that. Or you get a flat tire, God forbid. So you don't look at it, you've got so many things. I listen to all of these people, all these talking heads, blah, 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 blah. What they're doing is they're picking on it, picking on it, and picking on it, because there's so many things that they don't like. But take it as a whole, as a guide. Don't you realize it's a guide for the people? And you go accordingly. I like it. I read through, I said, yeah, there's a little bit of things here and there that I could, I could say, yeah, it's gonna be flexible. But that's what we got a plan for. We're gonna use that plan as a guide, a way to get through. And yeah, it's always gonna cost a few bucks more, because we had eliminated so many teachers and other people from the district and sort of replace them. Because the, the alderman, mayor, everybody, oh, we gotta keep the, keep the rate down, we gotta keep the rate down. Well, what are you doing? You're killing the kids by taking the rate down all the time. And instead of supplying the schools and supplying the needs, supplying the, the kids with the way to go. We have fantastic programs there for the CTE and everything else. We can elaborate on these things and use it as a magnet to bring kids in and maybe offset some of the, the kids that are being sent out. We have to look at everything, not just sit there and, oh, blah, 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 blah. Well, I can't do this, I can't do that, this is gonna cost them, blah, blah. And there's no mention of this, and no thing about the schools. Well, we know the schools. The schools have been there a long time before we were there, and we should know them by now, especially if you spent four years sitting on a, on your duff there in the, at the horseshoe. You don't know it by now, you'll never know it.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Moser. I'd like to go to Ms. Oden because she hasn't spoken at all yet.
Thank you.
And then I'll go around the circle again.
I guess what, what jumps out at me, the concerns about the population of our, our schools has gone down, the number of students. But our, our needs have grown. You know, when I, when I look at what we need, we, we were asked for nine ELLs teachers this year. We have more ELL students. Our sped, sped numbers have increased, and they will continue to increase along with medical improvements here in this country. Free and reduced lunch has increased. We need social workers, psychologists, health teachers, guidance. We're down SROs, and we have two very large high schools. We have lost administration from the high schools when they were new. This is a, a human capital need that we have. And every teacher I have spoken to, I have heard speak, has said they are seeing in the last two or three years some problems that they have never seen. Students are different today than when any of us went to school, and I'm the oldest one here, I bet, and it certainly, well-
I'm the oldest one.
Oh, thank, thank you, Mr. Moser. But, but, you know, we have to do what's best for kids. And these kids that come to school hungry, that come from families with the opioid crisis in them, where their parents are not home because they're out trying to provide money to buy food for the family or to pay the rent, or they don't have a place to live, the problems are different today. And please, don't think because we have fewer students, we ought to have fewer staff members helping them, because in fact, the problems today, we need more. So please, think about that.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. I'm the youngest one here, I think, and I, I can tell you that things are different than when I went to high school. The things that we're seeing our kids deal with are so different than the issues that I experienced. We have, the opioid crisis is huge. It's, it's just huge. And speaking as someone who has talked to children who have lost parents, who have lost, you know, siblings, who have lost relatives to the crisis, it's interesting. Ms. Walsh said that I tend to focus on the hierarchy of needs. And if you don't know what that is, it basically is a psychological theory that states that you can't focus on higher-level tasks if your lower-level needs aren't met. So if you're hungry, you're gonna do worse on a cognitive task than if you weren't hungry. If you're worried about where you're going to sleep tonight, you're not going to be able to focus on algebra. If you're worried that someone in your family is using drugs and not caring for you, you're not going to be able to learn how to read. And so I happen to agree with Ms. Van Twyver. In fact, I couldn't agree more with Ms. Van Twyver, that kids ought to be learning some of these skills at home. I mean, we, we ought to, as parents, be providing kids with this kind of emotional resiliency. But I think as a school, it might not be our responsibility, but it's our obligation to do what we can to get kids ready to learn. And if they're not ready to learn, we need to figure out how to get them there so that they can be successful. Because I, I forget who said it, it might have been Dr. Mosley, we don't choose the kids who come into our, our doors, and that's the best thing about public schools. We, we take everybody, doesn't matter where you came from, we'll take you, and we will do our best to see that you get an education. So I like that about this plan. I do think though, that, I, I take the point that it's difficult to approve something when there are errors in it, which is why I had asked about, are we approving just the plan or the executive summary? Because I think the executive summary and the appendices need to be fixed before I could vote for those things. I can't vote for something with big errors in it. But I don't have a problem with the plan. In fact, I kind of like the plan. And I'll, I'll say this, I read Milford's strategic plan, they just, they hired a consultant, they paid them like $30,000 to develop a strategic plan for them, including their, including their executive summary and appendices and all their goals. The whole thing is like 11 pages long. It doesn't mention budget at all, ever. But it does mention social-emotional learning several times. So I just thought that was interesting. And as I'm looking at other districts, which I like to do to educate myself, I'm seeing districts like Bedford, like Milford, like Hudson, all are adopting social-emotional learning. And so we're seeing that other districts, oh, and Manchester as well, other districts have tried this, and they are finding it to be something that is working for their district. So not to jump on the bandwagon, but if you see something that seems to be working, I feel like we have an obligation to try something. If we hate it, I suppose, in a year or so, the board could vote and say, we want to scrap the strategic plan, it's not working for us. I guess I don't feel like this is going to be carved in stone. So that's, that's where I am. I do think that everyone should have their say, and if there are changes, we should make them. Ms. Van Twyver, I believe you were next. That, wait, I wrote it down.
Thank you.
Somewhere.
I have, I also had a question about what consists of the whole plan, because, because-
Go around.
The appendices have been changed from an al, from a numeric to an alpha, and I also noticed that, that one of the appendices was removed from the packet this time, and that consisted of the data on the focus groups, which was information that I had requested by teachers, by however many, which proves your points. And I, I don't care what anybody says about data. Data proves your point. And, and if the fact that we only had 500 and something people show up for these focus groups, even though they gave us 8,000 or 6,000 responses, says to me that either they don't care, or they don't have any idea what the strategic plan is to be. I mean, it, it just doesn't sound to me that you can base this whole thing on that many people. And the fact that, I mean, you can, and the fact that we have three, how many students had applied to the other survey? You know, these kids, you can ask them, are the bathrooms clean enough for you? Are your kids getting beaten up in school? You can ask them those questions, but how do they know what they should be done academically? I mean, that's what they're here for, is to learn. So I, I just have a real problem with that. I like data, it proves to me, you know, what's true and what's not true. And, and the fact that we don't show that, even that the majority of our people didn't respond well, is because, I mean, it, it says to me that they're not interested. So anyhow, that was removed from the appendices, so I'd like to know exactly what's going to be posted as our strategic plan. So that's all I have to say in addition.
Dr. Mosley, do you have an answer to Ms. Van Twyver's question?
I do, actually. I, I, we can certainly provide, I'm sure, there's a couple things. We provided every single focus group, and I want the public to know this, and all the board, that we provided the board with the attendance sheet along with the statements that were generated for every single focus group. I want to be very clear that for, and Ms. Porter made reference to this as well, that we have the first name, last name, and the, the title or why they were there. And we had parents, some parents signed in as parents, some parents signed in as community members, some parents signed in as, as teachers too. They said, well, which one? We said, we don't really care, you just sign in the attendance sheets. We do have the attendance sheets, but in terms of breaking down whether these were parents or community members, we didn't ask or require them to do so. We also had parent, people who didn't feel comfortable signing their name, because to be honest with you, they didn't want their participation to be public, and they wanted to remain anonymous. We still welcome them in the group and have them participate in the focus groups. So that information has already been provided to the board. We'd be happy to make copies of the attendance sheets that, that have these names, and we do it again. It's just duplicating things that have already come to the board. The other piece to this, and I guess, you know, I look at Sue, is that we can certainly make revisions to some of the typos that were presented. What we're asking is really to approve the, the strategic plan and the vision, the goal and the mission, and we can, and if there are typos that we come across for the public, we've read this 110 times, and I feel like the typos are just like showing up on purpose. But we did do our due diligence. It's just a very thick and rich document. Be happy to have this approved, and then what we can do is, you know, do another proofread over again, again and again, and certainly get the executive, the executive summary back to the board for that two-part process. So if you wanted to approve, you know, the strategic plan and approve the executive summary with the understanding that we would address the, the couple typos, be happy to walk away with that. In terms of the appendices, that was just more of background information that was requested as the board. We'd like to keep this as simple as possible for the public because I think they want to know what's in the, the crush, the genesis and what is this plan. But certainly, if there's, if the will of the board, if there's clarification, we want to post it, all of that. Be happy to make those adjustments that were mentioned here tonight.
Madam President, to follow up on that, I've heard that before about, I don't understand, you didn't even publish in this, in this packet, the number of respondents for, the total number of respondents for the focus groups. That wasn't even posted in this, in this packet that we have, so. And I don't know whether this is going to be posted with, on the website as a total package too for what our strategic plan was.
Ms. Porter, you were nodding.
So I think that, once we get this, we're, we're working on a new website, and on the website, we would like to put the strategic plan, the executive summary and appendices, and the presentation that was made tonight.
Okay, thank you.
So that they would be simple links. We've been working on converting them to PDFs so that they would be easy to view and easy to print. So that is definitely in the works.
Okay, thank you. Did you have another statement? I know you had your hand up earlier. So did Mr. Kaufman, so did Ms. Hoensie, and I want to make sure that we don't-
That's okay, I don't think I've had a chance to speak yet, so let's do that.
This is what the context, excuse me, but this is the part, this part is to talk about the amendment and what's in it, not, not to vote. The vote on the, we have to still go back to the actual approval of the plan, right? There's an amendment about what constitutes being included, and I, I would hope that we would stay on that conversation, and then perhaps the comments going back to the plan could be-
So just to refresh everyone's recollection, Mr. Guarino withdrew his original motion, and then the mo, so now we have one motion. We have the motion to accept it. I wrote it down, and I've lost it.
Would you like me to read what I have?
Yes.
Approval of the Nashua School District 2019-2024 strategic plan, mission, vision, values, goals, and action steps.
Okay. And I believe it was because, yeah, because-
Okay, and I believe it was because, yeah, because you withdrew it, it was Ms. Porter's motion.
Porter's motion.
So, which I don't believe you actually spoke to because I think we kept going around the room.
Point of order. Ms. Porter had the floor and somebody overtook it and it just went. Could we please let Ms. Porter speak without interruption?
Yes, the floor is yours.
Thank you. All right. I would like to speak to the integrity of this process. I am really proud to have been a part of this. And I am insanely proud of the people who worked to get to this point, like insanely off the charts proud. This is a process full of integrity from the very beginning, right up until tonight. And I have no apologies for anything we've done. We took, talking about data, this was not only based on focus groups. I think if you refer to the slide in the presentation, we relied on the climate survey, which I know as a teacher I took. And I know that a lot of times, and I'm looking at all my teacher friends, when we take a survey, we wonder, what happened to that? Where did it go? And so we were very deliberate to go back as a starting point to that climate survey. So if you're a teacher and you're listening and you took that, we're listening. We listen to you and we took you seriously. We built on the results that came from that with all of the other data points that were listed. We, yes, we had focus groups. And I can vouch for the integrity of that process. We went so out of our way to include everybody. They had an opportunity. I mean, short of going to their house and dragging them out there, I don't know what else we could have done. It was open to everybody. And you know what? You can choose to come or not, you know? So after we had those focus groups, we wanted to make sure that people who couldn't come to those groups would have an opportunity to have their voice heard. So that's why we developed the survey, the online survey, which a lot, you know, I know that we have some people saying, you know, we should have done this or the question should have been that. Fair enough. But you know, this is a learning process for all of us. We did not pay outsiders to come in and come up with a plan for us. We developed this grassroots up. Part of our plan is to meet again, all of us who had a hand in this, and to write down what we learned through this process. You know, because I like to say, if, you know, we all won the lottery and we took off for Tahiti, this plan needs to stand on its own. And we need to be sure that people who write the next plan at the end of this plan can just pick up and do that. It's not dependent on people. It's dependent on, you know, this is a standalone plan for itself. So once we went through the data gathering, you know, process, I know that people are saying, well, this didn't, this wasn't based on this and this wasn't based on that. Part of having data is analyzing the data and looking through. You know, part of those comments that came out of culture, well, actually, when we were looking at SEL, I'm looking at Linda because we spent many quality hours together working on this. The SEL category was only if people specifically used that term. So if you're saying it didn't come out high, that could be because we looked for just that term. If you look at culture, which was the number one thing, the comments and the issues that came out in culture, when we analyzed those against a definition of whole child, against a definition of social emotional learning, we could put those things together into what the goals and action steps were. So the goal or the job of somebody who's analyzing data is to analyze that with, you know, looking at multiple sources. We're talking about a data matrix for kids to analyze and to see their growth on more than one test. We did that, all the things that are in this plan, we did in the development of the plan. So we are walking the walk and talking the talk, I think, here. As far as the task forces. This gives, this gives voice to teachers. Teachers want a voice. They want to be concluded in the development of policies and procedures and academics, the whole thing. So I think that, you know, to say, I know that when I was working, we are building, we had building, we had a leadership team. We had, you must have had those too. You have, already there are committees, this would just kind of refocus those committees that are already going on. I would say, if I were still working as a teacher and I saw this plan, I would be over the moon. I would be so excited to have the focus coming back to whole child. I know that Mrs. Oden was pointing a couple of times on the slides when we're saying back to whole child. And we really struggled with that when we were writing that. Should we put that word back in there or should we not? I think that sometimes back might have a connotation that you're going backwards and not progressing. But what we meant by that, and we're talking about age and old timers, and I include myself in that, Mrs. Oden. And I know that, you know, some of us have been here for quite some time. And if you can remember before No Child Left Behind, I think that we really did have a whole child approach once that legislation came in. And I'm not going to say there was nothing good that came out of whole child, No Child Left Behind. There was, there's accountability and different things that came. But I think that we had a whole child approach before that. So when we say back, I think our intent was to say pendulum is swinging. And if you're a teacher, you know that pendulum swing. It's always coming back and forth and we were, we're coming back to that. If we're talking about whole child, I know that when No Child Left Behind, for example, kindergarten teachers and first grade teachers were not allowed to do arts and crafts with kids anymore because it was all about test scores. And as a fifth grade teacher, I would get kids in fifth grade who did not know how to hold scissors. They didn't know how to cut. They couldn't glue because we got away from a whole child approach. And we're trying to have some balance in our life to look at kids and say, you know what? You are more than a test score. You're a little human being who, you're in our care and we love you and we want you to do well. So I think if you encourage the public to go and look at the appendices, because we looked, we tried really hard to be writers who are writing for different audiences. So, you know, we're trying to put on the hat, and I know Linda referred to this, like if I'm reading this and I'm a parent, what do I need to understand? If I'm reading this and I'm a teacher, what do I need to understand? If I'm an alderman, what do I need to understand? I know there's been a lot of talk about budget, but you know what? We have to set ambitious goals for our district. And you know what? We can't hide the fact of what we need to get what we're trying to accomplish. So these, you know, if you look in one of the appendices, these are proposed budget items. These have not been approved, they're proposed. So each year when you come to the budget cycle and you're going to the alderman and you're asking for approval for X number of items or personnel, human capital, you can draw a straight line for the alderman to, this is our plan, these are our goals, this is how we need to get there, and this is why we're asking for these positions. So you're not just coming, you know, I'm new to this budget cycle. I've gone through two of them being on the board. And the budget processes, you have a stream of people who come in and they make presentations. We need this, we need this. And you know what? They all are correct. They all need those things. We cannot do everything. So this is charting a course for us. This is where, we see where we want to go. And this is how we're going to get there. And these are the budget items we're recommending for approval so that we can accomplish our goal. Of course, the board still has, you know, they still have the final say on that. And the aldermen are the ones who have to finally sign off. So hopefully, in these, these documents, when you're, when Dr. Mosley is making a budget presentation to the alderman, they will be able to see a clear, straight line of what we need, why we need it. And, you know, we'll see, you know, maybe they'll approve the whole amount, maybe they won't. And if they don't, we'll make adjustments because, you know, we're all rowing in the same direction. Again, you know what? This has had its hills and valleys, as Dr. Mosley has alluded to. And, you know, working through this, this is a subcommittee of the steering committee. These are people who are on the steering committee, so, and they stepped up to do this. And it's easy, I think it's easy for you to look at these words and say, oh, why'd you do that? But I can tell you that every word in every part of this plan was deliberate, discussed, and, you know, try, we tried to look from every, every stakeholder's perspective, what would it be? So again, these, these task forces, I think teachers will embrace because it gives them voice and gives them a say in the education. They, you know, they're committed and invested in doing the best for our students and they want to all get on the same page. So I would anticipate that teachers will be happy with this. I know that if I was working, I would. And, you know, once it's voted on and approved, that's when the real work starts. Because we've been saying how much work it was to get to this point, but that's nothing compared to what it's going to take to actually implement the ideas that are in here. So, and I feel very confident relying on our professional, dedicated staff that they will pick up the mantle of this, this strategic plan. And they will, they will implement it and carry it out. And it's going to be beautiful. It's going to be a beautiful thing. So again, thank you to the team and to all of those hundreds of people who we don't see here tonight. Because it wasn't ju, you know, this was, you know, you start off casting a wide net, excuse me. And so, you know, all of the stakeholders and, you know, you funnel it up and funnel it up because you can't be in a room with 35 people and come up with this, you know? Five was, I think, about a good limit. So I am very proud of this. And I am excited for what's going to happen for our students once we implement this. I have no apologies. We, this whole process has been nothing but honest, transparent, and full of integrity. So I'm very happy.
Now, can we vote on it? Could we pull the question because we'll never get through tonight? I like to pull the question. If we have any other questions regarding the Nashua School District's strategic plan.
So you're calling the question?
But you said that we, a couple of people could talk, you were going to go around the room.
She said she was going to go around one more.
Right, I did say I was going to go around one more.
Do we really need to do that?
But she's called the question.
Yes.
No, you've already said that you're going.
It's not debatable.
It's debatable. She called him.
Yeah, my hands.
Can I ask my questions afterwards, then?
Let's vote on it.
No, you won't be able to.
I don't care, I have questions I have to ask whether it's before or after.
Well, it's non-debatable, so we need to call the question. Let's see how the call the question vote goes.
Okay.
Was there a second?
I'll second. On, on calling the question? An ending debate? Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohency?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Transparency, Susan, transparency.
I have been transparent all along.
Point of order.
Mr. Kaufman, you're out, you're out of order. Please stop talking, Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you, no, I vote no.
Okay, so the motion to call the question fails. I have one, two, three, four.
I meant, he's got me a little bit flustered. I, I, a yes vote is
To stop debate.
A yes vote is to stop debate? I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I vote yes, I'm sorry.
We have one, two, three, four, five yes and four no. We need two-thirds vote.
It fails.
It does fail.
Okay.
Because we need another vote.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino.
Debate is still open.
Okay, I had said that I would go around the room. I just want to call attention to the fact that it is now 9:36. So we've been here for three and a half hours. So please be concise.
Do we need to move to extend the time?
No, it's, we don't have a time limit for a special meeting.
Okay.
This is a circumstance where I kind of wish we did. And just to let everyone know, not that it matters, I have an early morning flight out of Boston. So my father is ill, I'm going to visit him. So it would be really great if we weren't here till like 11 or 12. I have an early day. So, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I was just going to ask that as part of the documentation that gets included, actual, the PDFs from the various board meetings where it was discussed are included on that same reference page. When you go to the strategic plan, not only will you see whatever the plan is and the appendices, but also the board debates. I think they should be part of it because not everybody's going to know how to find them or what the dates actually were when the meetings occurred. So for documentation purposes and transparency purposes.
You want a link to the minutes or the minutes to the PDF?
Either a link or, I personally, I would rather have the documents there because if links get lost, documents get moved around, you'll lose them. So a copy of the document in that directory is prefer, my, my preference would be to have it there, just like the other document, documents. You could have it all as, so download all, you include that. So that's all I want to say.
Okay, please take that under advisement, Dr. Mosley. Ms. Hohency?
Thank you. I just want to say first that I want to thank those that had this discussion. Most everybody here was gracious and we had differences and there wasn't a lot of personal attacks. Hopefully, the one or two that engage in that, we can, we can stop because I think it makes much better discussion. I have a few questions. The sixth task force, will the results be sent to the board for approval? These are not task force that are empowered to make decisions for the board?
If you look through, there is a, there is a mechanism in there whereby they report to the board periodically, yes.
Okay, so that goes to the board, that's good. We asked before, it's in here in the big action plan, to have, to discuss restorative justice in committee and the concern of a parent. Will that go to committee?
Can I answer?
Sure, go ahead, Ms. Porter.
So those were examples of things that that task force will research. So there's, so it was a fine line in here to set up the structures by which these things would be investigated and implemented. So the task force, the SEL task force could meet theoretically and decide that restorative justice is not the direction where they want to go. So we wanted to put in place where these discussions could happen with people who are on the front lines, the teachers, the administrators who are working on these things. So, so we wanted to be general but specific. I guess is what I'm trying to say is there was a balance there. And if you refer to the appendix, that is the description of the task forces, which is Appendix J. And you look in there, we were very deliberate to see what the membership of those teams should be. I know that was something that Mrs. Raymond asked for, to make sure that we would talk about that. And, you know, again, you look at that membership and you think, oh, it's one, two, three, four. There was a lot of discussion, who are the stakeholders? Who should be in there? And so you'll see that we tried to describe what each of those task forces would be doing and who they would be reporting to. So I think that a careful, close read of this document will help you to answer those questions. Because we do know that these things do need to come before the board. And they should, and that's in the plan.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification. There are things that, and I think, Sue, just to clarify, like there are, there are subcommittees of this board that would go, that these task force would report to and give, and give that direct feedback. And then base, working through the current structure within the board, those issues would come directly to the board. There are some things, social emotional, just use that. You know, that started off in curriculum. That piloted program of Choose Love would still need to come back to the curriculum pieces and then to the board. I want to be very, very clear. These task forces do not usurp and go directly to the board. This is, they have a structure in place where if there are recommendations district-wide, it has to do with curriculum or anything, they would be making these recommendations to the subcommittees of the board. That subcommittee would review it, ask questions, and then go through that vetting process and then to the board. It's important to note that this stuff is not about who reports to who. There is in this plan a responsibility on the BOE to talk about a governance structure so that we know and these committees know the proper structure. so that we know, and these committees know, the proper structure that works with this board. And I think that's important to note, that all of this needs to work in synergy for it to be effective.
Okay.
Just to elaborate on that a little bit more, we tried to have a balance between these task forces working ground up and top down. So, so, for example, with the building leadership teams, like, somebody mentioned, I can't remember who, is like, we're going to have all, you know, different schools doing different things. But if you, if you read this description, so the individual school leader, instructional leadership teams will be looking specifically at their school. What are the issues? Because our schools have different personalities. They're different. So we want each instructional leadership team to be really focused on the issues at their school. What is standing in the way of academic progress and success? So they'll look at that, and they are going to be funneling up to a district-wide administrator, that's why we put that in there, who's going to look for trends and things that are happening because I'm sure that there will be some trends. So it's a balance between looking at individual schools and then having a big picture at a, at a district-wide level on how to, you know, what PD, what materials, what do we need to do? So how can we help this individual school? And what are the things that are common among, you know, different schools?
That sounds appropriate, but for like restorative justice, I would think that task force, whoever has that is one of the things, might come to the committee, get the feel for the committee, and then go off, do their research, and come back to the committee. Somehow keep us in the loop.
Yes.
Instead of just coming at the end and dumping.
No.
So that interactive part with the board might help so that we have a little more cohesiveness.
I think it makes a nice connection between the people who are working in school and the board members.
Oh, I think so, too.
It gives, it gives a structure for that conversation to happen.
Yes. More conversation, the better.
Yep.
The org chart, if we're going to add an assistant superintendent, that should go to policy so that we add that one and have that discussion. The job descriptions might go to HR so we, we get that of their procedures, we get those approved or looked at.
So can I speak to the intent of that? That was, let's see, that was Appendix K. And I think the intent there was we knew that we were asking for quite a few positions. And in order to, it was more or less, how do we justify that position? So I think that this was, you know, we went through and spent some time, if we were to hire this person, a reasonable question is, like, why should we be spending that much money on that person? What is that person going to do? So the intent of this was to tie together the requested position with what they would do, and if you see the final column connects to the specific action steps. We are always trying in these documents to tie the action steps, the human capital we're asking for, the money we were asked to spend, always bring it back to the mission, the values, and the vision and the goals.
As long as we, at some point before we hire, we get the job description because you put this.
Yes, yes.
You know, the cart before the horse.
Yes.
I also want to know if there's going to be an answer to, if a parent asked me, can they opt out or will written consent be allowed? I mean, what is the parent? I mean, not every child has a discipline problem or behavior problem. We're imposing this on all. It's a $5 million project for all students. If a parent feels that they don't want to participate, what option does the parent have?
I believe parents always have the option to opt out of anything that's happening at school.
And how would that go about? I mean, is the administration comfortable with that? I just want to get that kind of feedback.
Yeah. I don't think the administration has a choice.
It's policy.
Doesn't matter if they're comfortable or not. The policy says, if you don't like something, you contact the administration or the, you know, up the chain and say, I'm not comfortable with my child doing this. I have an, I have an opposition to it. There's the opportunity for the parent to provide alternative curriculum if that's, you know, what they want, or to opt out entirely and have a different activity.
Right.
That's our policy, and I.
And it's going to be respected.
I fully expect that whatever, whatever is implemented here must follow our policy.
That's great to hear. And also, written consent, if, if some of this surveys or assessments are non-academic, if a parent doesn't opt out but just says, you know, you need my written consent before, I mean, are we going to try to follow that policy, too? Because we do have, there's another state law saying the district has to get a policy to give the parents notice.
And we updated that policy last year in policy committee, and then it came to the board.
Okay.
So in 2018.
Right. And there was a vote, a bill this year to reverse it, and it got vetoed, and I don't think it can be overturned, so.
So can I just speak to that? Excuse me. So we have, we have a social emotional task force, and we have a coordinator put in here. There is nothing that says that there's going to be social emotional evaluations of students. We're, the social emotional piece are just skills. So we're not evaluating, and that's going to be part of that job of that subcommittee, that task force, excuse me, to come up with what that's going to look like, what's that going to sound like. And they will be constantly informing the board before those things happen. So again, it's a committee that's of people who are on the front lines of doing this stuff, working through, you know, with them, you know, among themselves. It's getting late. I can't speak clearly. And, you know, I'm trying. We started at 8 o'clock this morning, so it's been a long day. So they're going to have those discussions at the ground level to bring to the board to have a full conversation before that. So it's not like on September 1st of, you know, or whatever the first day of school is. So in 2019, 2020, school year coming up, it's, this is not going to be happening on the first day.
No. But if they bring it to us and we have an awareness of what it is so we can talk to parents, or this district talks to parents, so they know.
Yeah.
What consent, if any, or how that's going to work, that would be great.
That would be part of that task force, yes.
Both of those policies are respected. That gives me a big relief.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Continuing around the circle. Mr. Mosher, did you have any other comments? Mr. Mosher, are you still there?
I'm here.
Okay. Do you have any comments at this time?
No, I don't.
Okay. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say that I would just want to talk about data real briefly. I have been collecting data for 34 years. Data for long-range plans, for municipal master plans, for public surveys. And I can tell you some things about data. It's not the quantity, it's the quality of data that's important. Yes, you need a scientific sample, so you need some quantity. Different people say different things about the same data. I have heard that. I have seen that. Takes a lot of money, time, and work to collect data, figure out what data you need, how to collect the data, how to synthesize or analyze the data, how to present the data. It just doesn't happen with the snap of a finger. So I want to congratulate Ms. Porter and Dr. Mosley. I think this was professionally done, short of going to people's homes and dragging them to focus groups, as Ms. Porter said. I recognize the integrity that's been put into this plan. So I'm going to be voting for it, and I hope that members of this board also vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Ms. Oden?
I just want to thank Lisa Yates, Linda Walsh, and Diane Vino because it's obvious from reading this, you put in a lot of effort, a lot of thought, and a lot of time to represent the, the teachers in the district, the parents and the students. I want to thank Susan Porter. She's done an amazing job. And I, I don't know, I think we, the $4,000 a year you could have used just on this project that a board member gets, so. And Dr. Mosley, thank you. You didn't take the easy way out, saying we need $30,000 to hire a consultant to come in and do this. And I think it would be real interesting to take this strategic plan and, and measure it against the other strategic plans that this district has, has put forward. So I think that would be interesting. But I want to thank all of you because it's obviously a lot of work, a lot of thought, and I, I think it's a great plan. There will be adjustments as we go along, but you have to be flexible in education, and all of you know that. But thank you immensely for all of your, your time, your effort, and your commitment to this district. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Timmons? I'm sorry, Ms. Porter? You were looking at me like you didn't have anything else to say.
Well, I have lots to say, but I think, I think I've said most of it. You know, the people who work here love Nashua. They love our kids, and they want the best for them. And I think they're, I, you know, this is a piece of paper. It's paper, but we were, there's a lot of heart and soul in here, and it's, you know, it's living and breathing, and it's, it's for our kids. And again, I'm just so proud of all of us. All of, all of, well, not me, but I'm proud of everybody else, so. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Timmons?
Thank you, Ms. Porter, and the rest of you guys that did this plan. I have eight kids, eight grandkids that's in the school, currently in school district right now as we speak. And I liked the plan so much, I did share it with my family, who agreed that it was a good plan, and it's about time. So we do read these things, and we do understand what they mean. So thank you, thank you, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Porter.
Okay. Thank you. Echoing everybody else, you know, Mrs. Porter spent like 70 hours in the last week on this plan, just volunteering her time to make sure that she had something to bring to the board. And I can't thank her enough for the effort that has gone into this. Everybody else, of course, as well. But I think Ms. Porter's commitment to trying to improve the district has been astounding. And I really appreciate it, both personally as a parent and as a board member. So I, you know, as far as the, the plan goes, I think we've all had our say, and we're ready to go ahead and vote, whether we agree or disagree or agree with part and disagree with part. I think we're at a place where we can vote on the plan. So, Mr. Guarino, if you could repeat the motion and then call the roll.
On the approval of the Nashua School District 2019 to '24 strategic plan, mission, vision, values, goals, and action steps. Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohency?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Um, yes.
I have, I have two no's and seven yeses. The motion carries seven to two.
All right. Congratulations, Dr. Mosley. Congratulations, Ms. Porter.
Adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Okay. On the motion, oh.
Get something to give to.
Oh, that's right. We do have something to give to Ms. Porter. Do you, I'll pick it up. So this is a very, very small token of our appreciation for all of the extra volunteering of your time you have done.[1753.23]